Welcome, everyone. We're just all kind of assembling in here. Okay, we're all set. So the first order of business is the singing of "Oh, Canada", is Naomi here? Naomi, you want to come on up here to the microphone, huh? And I'm going to give a little introduction. Welcome.
Thank you.
Is the little red light on the mic you're going to sing? Can you tell it the little button?
Yep.
It's on there? Okay. Okay, great. So Naomi, Naomi Shad, and I know Naomi. We used to be neighbors at one time. Naomi's in grade 10 at Ann Meyer. She enjoys basketball, soccer, and track and field. She plays travel basketball with the Niagara Selects. This past year, her team won gold in Division One of the OBAs. She's also involved in musical theatre and has recently performed in "The Wind in the Willows" with Yellow Dora Theatre. She's competed in several festivals in Ontario, and Naomi has been awarded a number of scholarships for her endeavors in drama and music. Let me see, what do you got? You got your family here? I see your mom here. Okay, you got your brother? Okay, that's good. So Naomi, we're all set. Whenever you're ready.
All righty. Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all thy sons command. Car ton bras s' porte l'epée, il s'eporte la quoi. Ton histoire est une épopée des plus brillantes exploits. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
All right, great job, Naomi. Naomi, I know you couldn't wait to run away, but on behalf of the city and City Council and everyone here, congratulations. We're very proud of you. You did a fantastic job and continue on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, super job. Gee, where are you? Good, good. How you keeping? Uh, I think so. I'll let you know when I don't have it, then I'll know I need it. Okay. First item of business, we're looking for an adoption of the minutes from the February the 13th Valentine's meeting. Oh, yeah, we have a correction. Yes, Councillor Crater, did you want to make that? Okay, well, why don't we put the motion on the floor? Okay, look for, moved by Councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by Councillor Strange. So, Councillor Crater?
Just one small correction. At our last council meeting, we discussed and we passed the Residential Rodent Control Rebate Program. And I think, and I don't think I'm alone with this, but I, what I thought was that when we passed it, it was approved and it was going to go forward. And what's happened is, and that's what I wanted to correct the minutes on, some people have called in, I contacted myself and maybe, maybe Councillor Thompson, because they've seen rodents. So I said, "You contact the city. We have a program in place. We just passed it at our last council meeting." And what they found out was the program is not going to take effect until the second week of April. So what I wanted the minutes to correct was that, let's start the program as of, we'll say, next week. And any of the people that did call in already, we would contact them and say, "You can fit in the program if you qualify." And the way the program works is that they will go out, take the form, and meet with the people to see if it's something that should come in the program. So I'm being a little long-winded, but I was sure at that council meeting it was going to take effect like immediately. And that's what a number of the people who watch it on TV, that's what they thought as well. So I wanted the minutes to correct that we could show it'll take effect as of next week or right after anybody called in.
Okay, great. Thanks for that, Councillor.
Thank you.
I've got Councillor Thompson?
Yeah, I don't want it to start next week. I'd make a motion. It'd start tonight.
Thank you.
Period.
Thank you.
Okay, so we've got, now, do we have any staff that wanted to comment on this? Sean, yeah?
Mr. Mayor, I think the issue was that the funding for the program is in your 2018 operating budget, which is yet to be approved by council. I understand the intent here. We can at least start the application process, because it's going to take a while.
Okay.
So we'll get going on this.
Okay. All right, we've got that. So do we need, Mr. Crater, do we need a separate motion for that?
I think what we should do is, because it's not a correction of the minutes, it's actually a motion for reconsideration. Because the motion, it was, it was a motion as, as, it was a recommendation of the report, really. So we're not changing the minutes. We're actually changing the recommendation that was contained within the report. So there should be a motion for reconsideration first, and then introduce the new motions.
So Councillor Peter Angelo, did you want to make that motion? As a motion of reconsideration, to bring that forward, to change the date?
Why would we have to make, why would you have to make a motion for reconsideration?
Well, I think it's procedural.
We passed the motion.
We did.
I thought it was automatic. That was the intention. So why are we fooling around like this?
Well, either way, it's just procedural. We'll get it done quick. So I need a motion, and we'll bring it back. We'll make the motion. It'll be done. So it's in the papers, in the paperwork, in the minutes property. So I need a motion. Can I have a motion for someone? Okay, moved by Councillor Strange, seconded by Councillor Peter Angelo. We'll reconsider that. We'll bring it forward. All those in favor of reconsideration? Thank you. And now the motion is by Councillor Crater, seconded by Councillor Thompson, that we have the rap rebate program starting immediately. Everyone understands the vote? The motion, rather? All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous? And now we'll go to the motion for any other problems or comments on the minutes? Okay, so we've got a motion by Councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by Councillor Strange, that we accept the minutes and approve the adoption of the minutes from the February 13th meeting. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved. So we're good now? Okay, thank you for that. Disclosures of a pecuniary interest. Did everyone get a chance to check? Yes, Councillor Peter Angelo, Councillor Cario?
Thank you, Worship. Check 412534 made out to myself as a reimbursement check.
Okay, thank you for that. Councillor Cario?
Thank you, Worship. 5.2 Winter Festival of Lights and 5.3 Niagara Falls Tourism. We have a conflict on those two items.
Okay. Do we have other? Okay, yeah, we're all looking right now. Yeah, Councillor Morocco?
There's a conflict with Niagara Falls Tourism.
Okay, that's noted. Councillor Ainoni?
Check 412, 412290, tomato, tomato, tomato.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other disclosures? Okay, and to myself, checks, two checks numbered 412262 and 41... No, actually, that's odd. I just realized it's an error. The same check number is issued twice. So it must have been on the same one. So it's 412262. It's one check. Okay, so if there's no other disclosures of a pecuniary interest, we've got a couple of obituaries. Gary McIntosh, retired firefighter. Gary worked for the Niagara Falls Fire Department for 27 years and retired as a captain in 1991. And Michael Pretty, who was a volunteer firefighter. Michael volunteered at Station 5 in Willoughby for 30 years. Like to thank council representatives, First Councillor Peter Angelo, for representing the city at the vigil for Trey Schlichter, 12-year-old boy originally from Niagara Falls who died from CO2 poisoning in Alberta. That was at Fireman's Park. And as well, representing the city at the coldest night of the year, on Saturday night as well. I know Councillor Strange was there at that event as well and represented... I'm sorry, Councillor Crater, I'm sorry, was at that event as well. And Councillor Strange representing the city at the Black Cultural Celebration Festival, the grand reopening of Bruins Pub, and the Niagara Crane Association New Year's Celebration. And I know that was all the same night, so you had a busy night. So thanks for, for doing that. Also had the grand reopening of Goodwill Niagara, opened up in the old IGA location. They've got twice the space, and I was joined by Councillor Crater. And last night, we had a meet and greet with Doug Gilmore, well-known Toronto Maple Leafs hockey player. And that was at the Embassy Suites. And I was joined by Councillor Strange. Lastly, to mention, Earth Hour is going to take place Saturday, March the 24th, from 8:30 until 9:30. And we ask residents and business to consider turning off their lights. The lights in the falls will also be turned off during this time. So that's Saturday, March the 24th, from 8:30 till 9:30 PM. And the next council meeting will be Tuesday, March the 27th. So we hope everyone has a safe and enjoyable March break. Also, at this point, I'd like to introduce our Sergeant-at-Arms. It's a new person in the chamber. Maybe if I could get you to stand up, this is Dan Moody. Dan is our Sergeant-at-Arms. He's here this evening, and he's going to provide a presence to help maintain a friendly order and act as official in council chambers. Dan brings him with a wealth of experience in Niagara. He's a retired Staff Sergeant with the Niagara Regional Police, served more than 30 years with the force. He's a lifelong resident of Niagara Falls, and he knows many of the issues facing our city and is a familiar face to residents and citizens. And I would hope that you'd help and join me in welcoming Dan as our Sergeant-at-Arms. All right. Now, moving on to deputations and presentations. We have our Bee City Canada Deputation. And I understand Renee Delaney of Bee City will be joining us. Yep, you can just come right up to the microphones here. You can come. Are you together? Come on up. There's two, lots of room.
Come on up, Emily.
I'm allowed, Jim?
You're allowed. Give her support.
This is totally different. This is a different Emily you see here.
Yes, this is not Thundering Waters. We're here to talk about bees. Today, I'm pollinators. So please do not hold my Thundering Waters against...
We're good. The floor is yours. You've got 10 minutes.
10 minutes, okay. Thank you. So I'd actually like to first start by thanking Jeff Garashi, who was with the Parks and Culture Department of the City of Niagara Falls, because he's how I was able to get to this point and, and talk to each of you for 10 minutes, which is a big deal to me, because the bees seemingly right now aren't being heard. And what we are trying to do, I'm going to try and impress upon you in the next 10 minutes. So I'm going to go back a little bit and talk about my story. My name's Renee Delaney. It actually says on here that I'm from Bee City, Canada, but my organization is called Small Scale Farms. I'm actually partnered with Bee City, Canada, and we went before council in St. Catherine's and became a Bee City last May. And it was a really excellent experience for us, because, one, it was my first time in this type of a situation where I realized, "Oh, you're already doing so many wonderful things." And it exposed me to who already had their foot in the door with pollinator gardens, who knew about bees, who knew nothing about bees, and some of the policies and some of the laws that existed that were either for or against pollinator populations increasing. So through that process with St. Catherine's, it was just a wonderful learning experience. And now, standing here and asking my hometown, "If you want to be a Bee City", it, it means a lot, because, one, you're second, you're second on the list. Then, then Welland, then Port Coburn, then, you know, we go from municipality to municipality and say, "Do you know why the bees are dying? Is there something that we can do as a municipality to help them?" And every time that I ask that question or I'm presented with that question, it comes down to the food system. So we've taken a few pretty pictures in front of some pollinator gardens, and we've invested a fair amount of money in some flowers. And Niagara Falls is obviously very invested in, in, like, the Parks Commission has done a ton for the bees already. So at this point, we realize, okay, what, can we go deeper? Can we look into what it is that, you know, we can actually do that's tangible here? And so we've come up with a bit of a game plan. So the first step, I think, is, is to note that, because this is a bit of a different process, the BCD application is something that, like, this is a charity that's going across the nation, trying to convince every municipality to do this, so that we can get all on the same board. So this, this resolution and application is rather quite simple. We're doing six gardens in Toronto, so as an example of what Bee City is. We're putting in six gardens in Toronto, but we're putting them in with food and flowers. And we're going into the schools and we're saying, "Do you know about bees, you know? Do you know why they're dying?" And for the record, this is about looking at what we can as a municipality and saying, "Well, are there laws, are there bylaws set up that, like, for instance, with the pesticides? Are we using the wrong kind of pesticide? Is it affecting the bees?" So, you know, my, my first, just, and the only thing I'll say about it, is that a pesticide is designed to do what? Kill, kill an insect, right? So not necessarily a pest, but sometimes you sort of take the whole lot when you're not paying attention to, you know, when you think that, that dandelion is ugly, for example. That's the first source of food that the bee has when they leave their hive from the winter. So we don't want to kill the ugly dandelions. So having these types of conversations with council and people that, you know, from the community side, we have, we have a small army of volunteers right now who are putting together different events and, and starting to go back out into the community and saying, "Okay, what do you want to do?" Like, we know the problem. We get that a pesticide is going to kill pests and incest, insects. So we're not, we're not here to argue about that anymore. There's no gray area. We're literally starting to find the solutions. And for us, it's, it's a food system. So we've, we've, as an organization, Small Scale Farms, we now feed people, and we grow our own food, and, and we're starting to look at local food distribution and how it is that we can pay a little bit more attention to the way that we're... to local economy, I think is the best way to say that. So it's funny, but it all ties in to the bees. And the bees are a bioindicator. So what that means is that the bees are showing us. So if the bees die, we die. So we look to these, a bioindicator means just that. And the bees are a superorganism. We are a superorganism. We, there is a lot of things that we need to be paying attention to that seemingly, and just even while I'm speaking, sometimes just I see go right over people's heads, and it's, it's, it shouldn't. You know, like, and especially when you, when you travel along, as I have, this is my fourth year, like, an activist, as an activist as well, and, and just somebody who's very passionate about what I'm doing. And you get into situations where, and I'm sure you all know, that you get into situations that you don't understand why it is that way. You know, if everybody's, no, it doesn't seem to make sense. Why is it that way? We don't want the bees to die. We don't, you know, we don't want poverty be happening, these sort of things. My organization's at the point where we're just starting to look at, "Okay, well, if this is the problem, then what is the solution?" So if we could drop the price of local food, for example, if we could grow our own food, if we could not use pesticides. It all ties in. So each step that we're doing is very connected to a bigger picture. And Bee City, Canada is a very like-minded organization. So we're partnering on curriculum. We're partnering on workshops. We're finding the way to have the answers. Like, we, this is the first step. Like, we're asking for a vote that you want to become a Bee City. And Jeff has started to make those little moves, right? Like, so let's talk to the Parks Commission, and let's talk to the various organizations that are already doing something, and combine our efforts, so that we can come up with a little bit of a strategy, rather than just, "Oh, you know, that's a pretty big law." And in St. Catherine's, Mayor Senzick is, you know, asking some great questions too, right? Like, so what are the laws? Why are those laws there? Because sometimes it just hasn't been looked at, and it's just worthy of taking a look and saying, "Well, what if we made a declaration as a city? What if we made a declaration as a city to support the bees?" Right? What, that's that first step, where we, we can send a ripple out into, into the community at large and say, you know, "We're serious about this. We, we should be taking a look at the stuff that involves our ecosystem and involves a little bit of a, it requires a little bit of thought." You know, there is no easy answer to this. So the first step is us coming, speaking to you, and going from there.
Almost 100% of the food we eat is pollinated at some point. So think of it that way. Don't think of it as bees. Think of this as food security. This is Niagara. Imagine a Niagara that cannot grow food and fruit. What happens to the wine industry, not even just the agricultural, if we are not able to pollinate our foods? We are a major point in, where everyone comes up from South America. We get all, you know, sciency about it all. But Niagara's important. This is something that, there is no negative. It's not costing you anything to agree to this. It's not anything really beyond...
Oh, did you have a question?
Sorry, did you have a comment? Sorry, a question? I stopped. I assumed you had a question.
So I don't know if you wanted to finish your presentation, then we've got questions from council?
Sure, I think, I think just to summarize it, I think, I think this is, this is just a conversation. This is the first step. So, you know, I, I, I see it, I love the nodding heads and the support, because those are the people that we'll gravitate to. You know, if it's not your thing, that's okay. But we want to, we want to meet the people in the community who are able to help us, because we do have a group on the ground that are working on some very serious things. And you guys are in positions to be able to help us. So I just kind of want to find the people that are able to help that move along, because it's, it's really important work that we're doing. So we hope that you see that as well.
Okay, thank you very much. I've got Councillor Ainoni and Morocco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I had seen your presentation at the St. Catherine's City Council, and I was glad to see them support it. And I would be happy to make a motion that we support it also. It's proactive, it's positive. There, it's, everywhere you read tells you the effects of the bees that are dying in, in food security in particular. So I just think this is something that we can take on and, and the whole community can come together. So I would move that.
Okay. And seconded by Councillor Morocco, and the bees and the butterflies, right?
All pollinators.
I tend to talk about bees, but it's all pollinators.
Yeah, I've got it in my front yard too, and I love the monarchs, how we stop off. Yeah, it's nice. So we've got, if there's no further discussions or questions, we can call that vote. All those in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Folks, I would just ask, I know you're excited, and I know you're enthusiastic, but we just ask for decorum in the chambers. No clapping, booing, yelling, throwing things, anything like that. So, thank you. Next up is our, and I know you're enthusiastic, there's a bunch of our volunteers from the Winter Festival of Lights. So I'd like to welcome Tina and your team, and we're ready for your presentation.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Jim DiO'Daddie and members of council. I'd like to start off by thanking you and your, for your continued financial support and investment to the Winter Festival of Lights. I would like to thank Mayor Jim DiO'Daddie and Councillor Wayne Campbell for sitting on our board, along with our city liaison Serge Felicetti. In addition, I am very thankful to all our board members, stakeholders, partners, volunteers, sponsors, and suppliers who make it happen each year. Today, I am here to request $400,000 in funding for the Winter Festival of Lights and New Cascades of Fire Niagara Falls International Fireworks Competition. And here is why I think you're going to say yes. For the past 35 years, when dusk hits Niagara Falls between November and January, the Winter Festival of Lights transforms the city into an array of dazzling lights. Whether guests are walking or driving through our eight-kilometer route, viewing our free entertainment such as unique firework performances, laser lights and sound shows, or entertainment by world-renowned performers, they are spending their time in Niagara Falls in the off-season. During the 1982 inaugural year, 250,000 people and 40 motor coaches attended the festival. Since then, numbers and publicity has grown tremendously. In 2014, the Winter Festival of Lights put into place a new governance model and built a strategic plan to be an organization that contributes to the growth of tourism and economic, cultural, and social strength of Niagara Falls by delivering experiential wintertime programming. We aim to make the festival a fully integrated part of Niagara's culture of hospitality and tourism, ensuring that wintertime visits are a must-do experience. Today, your investment has made this happen. Today, the festival brings in over 1.3 million visitors with an economic impact of over 48 million and an estimated 63 million in new spending. This comes from the Enigma Research Economic Impact in 2016. WFOL is an annual celebration for local residents and visitors alike to celebrate all that Niagara has to offer in the wintertime. Your investment continues to grow the festival, year after year, bringing more people to Niagara in the off-season, which provides a larger economic impact. From the Economic Impact Report done by Enigma Research in 2014, visitors increased from just over a million to over 1.3 million. Over the course of the last three years, the festival has had a 43% increase in unique visitors. Although our numbers for 2017 Economic Impact will not come in for another month, the data collected by our festival ambassadors indicated that over the course of the last four years, the festival car count has increased 77% since 2014. This is in Dufferin Islands alone. Our car count increased from 43,000 to 76,000. This does not include the 491 buses that were up 8% over last year. At the beginning of 2017, the Winter Festival of Lights felt privileged to be recognized at the Chamber of Commerce Business After Five of the RBC Financial Group's month of January. The festival was recognized internationally in Tucson, Arizona, at the International Festivals and Events Association as the recipient of the Gold Pinnacle Award for Outstanding Accomplishments and Top Quality in Creative Promotional and Operational for Mobile Application, ranking with some of the leading festivals and events around the world, including the Kentucky Derby and the Singapore Garden Festival. This past year, we are also recognized by Attractions Ontario as the recipient of the People's Choice Award for festivals in Ontario. The festival currently holds the Top Festival of Distinction Award for Ontario and is ranked the top 100 festival for festivals and events in Ontario. Opening ceremonies, despite the weather, it proved to be one of the most exciting, as Rick Mercer had a tour of the site while filming a segment on the Winter Festival of Lights and Niagara Falls for the 15th and final season of the Rick Mercer Report. Through the wind and rain, Rick had the opportunity to test out a few pyro tricks onstage with our performers of North Fire Circus, try his hand on tree-light wrapping with the Niagara Parks Commission's arborist team, and traveled down the gorge to set off the first round of fireworks, following the evening show with David Weisel International Fireworks. Rick's segment on the Winter Festival of Lights was broadcast December 2nd, leaving plenty of time for visitors to make a trip to Niagara Falls to see the millions of dazzling lights. Following the segment, Rick returned to Niagara Falls live for New Year's Eve, where he pre-recorded parts of his segment down in Dufferin Islands, giving national exposure once again. This year, our PR reached an ultimate high. We were featured in the Globe and Mail, NRC Media, Great Lakes Publishing, The Moon Ontario Guidebook, Niagara Falls Review, as well as international travel brochures, just to name a few. We would like to thank your TV staff and volunteers for coverage of all of our events. Here is WKBW Buffalo Channel 7 news reporter Brittany Muller giving viewers a behind-the-scenes look at preparations for the Winter Festival of Lights 35th season. The Winter Festival of Lights takes great pride in being a part of the community. This year, we partnered with various nonprofits, charities, and community events. We handed out candy at Safari's Niagara's Boo at the Zoo with our mascots, provided our mascots and volunteers at Heartland Forest Annual Pumpkin Fest, worked with the team at Comic-Con in facilitating Wonder Woman's showcasing on the Oaks Hotel and provided fireworks, participated in the biannual Community Clean Suite, and we also worked with Heater's Heroes by providing a special night for four special heroes to change the lights on the falls and set the fireworks off. The Winter Festival of Lights supports all of our partners. Here we are at Niagara Parks Commission's Christmas Market, the 150 in the falls with the City of Niagara Falls, and supporting the Falls View Casino Resort. the city of Niagara Falls, and supporting the Falls View Casino Resort. The volunteers are the heart and soul of the festival. Over 4,300 hours were dedicated to the Winter Festival of Lights this year, showing pride in our community has, showing the pride in our community, that our community has for the festival. As the festival continues to grow, so does the number of our volunteers, as well as their spirit they all bring to each of these events. As you can see here tonight, we have a few of our volunteers, suppliers, and stakeholders. Where would the money be going? Coming 2018, the festival will bring back Creos, a Montreal-based company that provides illuminated public art that travels the world. The Impulse Exhibit consists of illuminated seesaws that respond and transform when put into motion by visitors. When not in use, the seesaw will stabilize in a horizontal and remain at a lower glowing level. When activated by users and inclined, the seesaw augmented by LED light and speakers will increase in intensity and emit randomized sound sequences and light. The Loop, this illuminated musical installation, features a distinctive retrofuturistic look. It uses cylinders two meters in diameter. Visitors are invited to sit down inside and activate the mechanism, causing beautiful images inspired by 13 fairy tales to come to life. Loop is sure to spark the children's imagination and revive the parents' childhood memories. And by popular demand, we will bring back Passage, an 84-foot-long experiential light tunnel and prismatica. Niagara Falls Winter Festival of Lights will offer a stage to light artists from around the world who wish to present their work at our festival for a limited time. The light art will consist of six to eight exhibits, featuring both one-of-a-kind displays as well as others from Amsterdam Light Festival. We have a few grants in on both of these exhibits. Light art is relatively young art from which has experienced rapid growth thanks to the revolution of LED. Light is a versatile and highly-visual material which can be used both abstract and figuratively. Both forms are reflective in the artwork of the festival. By showcasing these unique art, artistic displays in Niagara Falls, we expect to attract new art enthusiasts and visitors. In addition to the illuminations, the festival continues to host programming such as Deck the Falls Holiday Tour, an annual Disney show in partnership with Linus Hand Productions, and new for 2018, we will work with the Falls View Events Group to present special event with chef Michael Smith. Additional programming provides visitors with more reasons to stay additional nights in our city. A quick recap on the economic impact of 2016-17 season: 1.3 million visitors, economic impact of $48 million in 2016, over $42 million in 2015, equivalent to 791 full-year jobs supported by the festival. Estimated $22.7 million of tax revenue generated by event-related spending. Non-local attendees and event operations resulted in $63.9 million of new spending. The final economic impact report from our most recent 2017 season will be released in the next month. However, we would like to share with you that our festival car count in Dufferin Islands had showed a 7.7% increase over last year and 8% increase in buses. In addition to the three-month Illumination Festival and all the programming that takes place under its umbrella, the festival has applied for grants to launch a new festival, the Cascades of Fire Niagara Falls International Fireworks Competition. Cascades of Fire is an annual multi-day international fireworks competition over the majestic Horseshoe Falls. In partnership with David Weisel International Fireworks, the Winter Festival of Lights will ignite the sky over the course of three weekends in November, bringing teams from around the world. David Weisel International Fireworks produced the Festival of Fire event that took place at Ontario Place prior to 2010, when it was closed due to renovations. Most recently, David Weisel coordinated, produced, and executed the International Fireworks Competition in Timmins, Ontario. Cascades of Fire has already received interest from the following teams who are confirmed for 2018: China, Italy, Vietnam, Finland, and the finale by Canada. We would partner with a radio station and have it fully choreographed to music, so this is an 18-minute presentation fully choreographed to music. Tentative for 2019, a few other countries that have already said that they are interested: Australia, France, Korea, and Poland, with a finale by Canada and inviting the winner of the previous year to come back for the introduction. In November, the festival did a three-minute test show, which was not as large as the competitive competition level, only using the smaller shells. This was the result, it was spectacular. Now, imagine 18-minute shows synchronized to music with the firing site spreading across the entire international control dam. What a sight this would be. International fireworks competitions draw in from 50,000 million, 50,000 to millions of people. Some of the largest are in Da Nang, Vietnam. In 2016, the annual Honda Celebration of Light Fireworks Competition produced $40 million in economic activity for the region of Vancouver. Cascades of Fire would directly boost tourism in Niagara Falls during the shoulder season as well as boost our international reputation. Our five teams will be firing from the international control dam as seen in the previous picture. David Weisel has over 50 years' experience in the fireworks industry. He is a qualified chemist who is responsible for the formula of many of the fireworks in use today. He brings experience, sorry, he brings experience from multimedia productions in four continents. He's an award-winning choreographer and he has license to teach the fireworks course mandated by the Explosives Regulatory Division. David will act as the technical director. Our objective is to provide a world-class event which is a must-do for visitors. Due to the larger amount of space on the ICD Bridge, the festival will be able to showcase eight-inch, 10-inch, and 12-inch shells, which double the height of the current six-inch shells that are set off in the Niagara Gorge. The Winter Festival of Lights works year-round to make Niagara Falls a four-season destination, capturing the beauty of wintertime in Niagara. Your investment will continue to grow our festival year after year. This will bring more people to Niagara Falls during the off-season and produce a, and provide a larger economic impact for our city. We're a 90-day-long festival as in next year. That is a quarter of the year. Thank you for your contributions and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Okay, thank you very much, Tina, that was great. Do you have any questions? Councillor Strange.
Yes, Your Worship. Uh, Tina, your presentation, and I, I said last year, I'm like, you know what, you keep topping it every year, and I just, it's amazing because more visitors are coming every year and you keep stepping up and, you know, with, with different lighting, now we, we have the chance to do the fireworks festival. It's just amazing and we find that, you know, we're always considered a, a summer destination, but now because of you and we have, I know Christine Hess is here and Rick Stokes and pictures that you've shown and, and shown the falls and then one year they thought it was frozen, so we're getting more visitors, but the lighting in, in Dufferin Islands, it's just amazing and, and it's attracting so, so many, much more people and they're not staying for one day, now they're staying for three or four days. So it's, it's great and I, I just wanna thank the backbone of the Winter Festival of Lights, the people behind there. And I know it was a real frigidly cold winter and you guys are out there busting your butt and, and, and in that cold, so thank you very much for all, all you volunteers, so congratulations.
Thank you. We've got councillor Peter Angelo.
Uh, thank you, Worship. Through you to Tina, I just wanna say, great job once again. It's, it's very nice to see that the festival numbers are actually growing and the investment that's being made by the city is bringing, I guess, a, a greater economic impact than we had expected. I like the idea of the Cascades of Fire coming. I remember something similar at Ontario Place years ago and that brought in a lot of people, so it's great to see that Niagara Falls is getting on the map with world-class performances such as this. So congratulations to yourself and your staff and to all the volunteers, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councillor Crater.
Hi Tina, nice to see you as well. Just a couple of short questions that I got from the public. They were asking me, do we fi, I know what the answer is, but I said I would ask it in council, so those that ask can hear it. Now, we, we currently fund the festival for operational costs?
Uh, yes, fee for service.
So this is in addition to that?
That's correct.
Because of the programs that you're adding?
The additions, yes.
And remind me, how much do we fund the festival for operationally right now?
Uh, so the fee for service is $342,000 and I am here today to ask for $400,000 in advanced funding.
In addition?
Yes.
So it's $300,000 that we already fund and this is in addition to the $300,000?
Yes.
Okay.
So 700.
So it's $700,000 altogether?
Yes.
Okay.
That is correct.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson.
First of all, great presentation and, you know, when you talk about tourism, this is what it's all about in this community. I recall many years ago, probably '40, where I used to run for reelection and you go to all of the industry and there'd be the cyanide, the, all the other huge industries, the lionite, you'd stand there and shake three or 400 hands of people as part of your campaign. All of that is going, and thank God we have Niagara Falls Parks Commission and all of the wonderful development that has taken place in this Niagara region, Niagara on the Lake, the Lion Country, and the thing is, I made a comment in the paper a week or so ago, many years ago, we used to talk about the magic hundred days, where people came here on May 24th and they left on Labor Day. Everybody got laid off, everybody went home, and we had some real problems and struggles trying to survive. The Festival of Lights that came on and was doing great for a while and then took a little dip and because of Tina and her enthusiasm and her innovative approach to everything that is happening there, I love the new firework program. What, is that North Korea or South Korea? Anyway, I think the program is excellent. You have how many volunteers involved?
Several. Uh, this year, we had over 4,300 hours, probably 100 volunteers.
4,300. The 1.3 million in revenue, this is extremely important for us to continue on with what we do in regular tourism, to expand and make sure everybody keeps working and that we support. Now, councillor Crater mentioned out of our operating budget, it's 342,000. This was a decision from the council to use the OLG funds, 25 million, how much did we get last year?
Approximately.
25 million. No matter what municipality you're talking about, probably around the world, they're interested in supporting economic development. And a lot of people in this community don't really understand what we're doing with respect to tourism when we say we support them, because that is our economic development. That's what provides the jobs. I think you're gonna hear from John Jackson shortly about 42,000 jobs, not just Niagara Falls, this entire region is affected by Niagara Falls. People come from around the region every day to work in this community because of Tina at the Winter Festival of Lights and John Jackson at Niagara Falls Tourism, which really makes the difference. What will we, what would we do in this community if everything froze down tomorrow and we didn't have tourism? We wouldn't be able to survive, we wouldn't be able to live and afford to live in Niagara Falls. So I just wanna say, congratulations, we're not talking about out of our budget, we're talking about the money we make from the casino, which is, some of it is set aside for economic development. So congratulations on what you're doing.
Thank you, councillor Strange.
I was just wondering if you'd just be able to go over the numbers for 2016, the impact that we've had, number-wise as visitors and, and money-wise as well. I know you, you don't have the numbers for 2017, which I probably, or, just for 2016.
Just for 2016, so 2016, our numbers were 71,000 cars, over the 61,000 cars the previous year, so it was an increase, and it was $48 million economic impact, as well as 1.3 million visitors. Comparable to the previous economic impact for 2015, which was a million visitors and $43 million economic impact, and I believe the 20, 2014 economic impact was around the $25 million economic impact. So we've had extreme growth. I have, I'm pretty sure I had the economic impact sent to everyone in advance.
I just wanted the public to be able to watch, to actually realize the impact that you guys are making.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions or comments? Uh, you know, and I'd like to echo the comments that I've heard too. The thing that I like, it's the best of both worlds, it's for tourism, for the local industry, which is huge, and, and at the same time, it's for the locals. It's something that everyone here locally likes and it's part of the, I think, the tradition of Christmas and the lights and grabbing a box of Timbits and going for a drive and checking out the lights. It's one of those things on the bucket list every year and, and I, like what everyone else said, what's neat is you keep reinvigorating it. There's, for example, the tunnel at the convention center, you had those prisms that you could spin, there's always these new and fun things, there's the projection technology, now we've got fireworks coming in, like the De Morier lighting that used to be in, in Toronto. It's exciting, a lot more reasons to come to Niagara Falls and also a net benefit for anyone who lives here. You don't have to go that far, you don't have to drive to some other jurisdiction to enjoy world-class attractions, so. Uh, so I guess at this point, Mr. Clerk, are we looking just for a motion to receive the presentation?
Uh, yes, that's correct, and I believe that we're looking for the request for, as the presenter has stated, for the additional funding.
Okay, so.
Are we approving this or moving it to a budget?
Well, that's up to this council. If this council wants to make a motion either way, I suppose, it's up to this council to make a decision. Councillor Crater?
I do wanna make a really quick comment to Tina and to everyone from the festival. Certainly, I support it. Why don't you understand why I asked the question, because I just think it's important, Worship. I have in front of me a petition, and it's signed by a number of people. It's nothing to do with the Festival of Lights, but it is in a, in a roundabout way. So it's at Culpeper Street, and they didn't make the cut on Culpeper Street for the new roads, the sidewalks, the sewers that they thought they were going to be on, and I know I've talked to, to our director about this. So they've put together a petition, they've asked me to bring it, which I will do under new business, but when I met with them, what they were saying to me is, how come we don't make the cut, Kim? Why isn't our street getting fixed? And if you go out and take a look at it, and I know we have a number that have problems, why isn't our sidewalk getting fixed? There's a school there, Princess Market, even they, the school signed it. So they had seen the, the agenda and so they started to ask, I went to see them and they started asking me questions, well, what about us? We're the residents, we live here. And so they asked me if I'd ask a couple of questions, and I'm not being critical of you all, I'm just sharing with you the calls that we also get from people in the community who aren't quite as involved in the tourist industry, but who are residents and feel that they're entitled to some things. So I hear what, I need to be sure now, because I had told them, and maybe I'm wrong then, and I apologize if I am, but I had said, well, we're gonna discuss it tonight and then it goes to the budget and I'm going to try to bring their problem up with Culpeper Street in, in to take, if we can find some way of funding that and moving it forward. And I know Jeff has some, Mr. Holley may have some comments, but I don't wanna get into detail, I was just giving you some background, why I brought it forward, it was not to be critical of the Festival of Lights at all, just because residents were asking questions, particularly in their area. So if we're just moving it forward, I'm fine with that, but if we're moving it into the budget, then I'd like their petition and their request to be considered at the same time, and I'll bring it forward tonight and then we can see if we can find a way of funding the residents for their roads and sidewalks and everything else that needs to be done on Culpeper Street. That was on the priority one list, at least so they know it's moving forward, because right now it's off the list completely and they wanna know something is gonna move forward. So that's, anyway, that's the reason, I just wanted to share that with you. Surely, you never should be critical, I didn't want you to think that that was the purpose of it all, because that's not the case. But we do get the calls from the residents who kind of want some things done for them as well.
Okay, thank you very much, councillor. Councillor Morocco.
Oh yeah, I just, for clarity as, as well, thank you Tina for the presentation and also a great supporter and past involved in the festival for years as well. But to councillor Crater's comments and also to way back in, and councillor Thompson's, it, it's two different funding that we're pulling the money from because with the OLG, and I have to say, I'm looking at that TAB 10, and there's millions of dollars there that we have to look at working to help stop sewer backups, road repairs, and everything else, that really is our mandate. And then we're looking at where we have additional money, and we all wanna support additional things to help move the city along and build and create and bring more tourists. And as councillor Thompson pointed out, that the OLG has a fund there allocated for economic development, that certain amounts of money have to be spent from that funding in economic development, which is what the Winter Festival of Lights is coming forward in requesting money from that, right? And I believe they are probably only one of the, the only organization that comes to pull money from that, is that, is that correct? Who's gonna answer that? Jeff?
Um, yeah, maybe, who on staff here, I know Todd's on here, Kat, you're handling things, so where would the funds?
Well, I, I think it's just important that we address this so that people understand where the money's coming from, because we have a budget that, that money is supposed to come for repairs and things that we do, and then the OLG has a certain other amount. So I just wanted to finish off on what councillor Thompson had said, that that money is there and allocated for that, so Jeff, I just want to get clarification so that... So, Jeff, I just want clarification so that the residents do know that, so the people on Culp, because I've heard the same things from other things that I'm dealing with as well.
Hi, Charlotte. I think you're right, Counselor. There's a, there's a number of priorities that council will want to address that weren't included in the capital budget, and some of these can wait until May, which I think is the schedule for the report, once we find out from the province exactly where we are with the contribution agreement. Some of them can't wait, so you may want to advance them or pre-approve them, in essence, using funding from the OLG reserve. In my discussions with the CAO and Director of Finance, it was their hope that we would have a look at all the extras, the asks, and deal with them in the, in the context of, you know, the municipal improvement repairs and sewer reallocations and requests for funding. We could deal with them all at one time, and that would be in May. But I do know that the Winter Festival of Lights is looking for some type of commitment so they can start to advance some of the promotion and get a head start on some of these programs that they've got lined up. So, council really has a couple of options. They can pre-approve this ask, they can defer it to consideration with the rest of the report.
Okay. For example, I have a couple of things that I would like to pull from TAB 10 that really need to be addressed. Where will that money come from that I'm asking to pull some items from TAB 10? Will that come from OLG, or is that coming from our budget?
In certain situations where there, there might be some excess funding as a result of maybe some low tender prices, it would come from the capital holding reserve.
Okay. So, just so that people are aware, where money is coming from, and that if we approve or if it goes to budget for consideration, that that still would be considered under that, but it would be part of the money being pulled from OLG. That extra four hundred thousand they're asking for, not the three hundred and forty-two, but the four hundred thousand over and above.
I think, Counselor, if you, if you want to pre-approve this, then you should dedicate where the funding source comes from. If you want to wait till you have all the asks in front of you, which would be at the May meeting, I believe there's only one meeting in May, then...
No, and I'm not asking for anything. I'm just asking for clarification so that people know, because as Councilor Crater said, he's got people that have come to him to say, "Why is this not, why are we not accounted?" I've got two other groups as well that are saying, "Why are we not?", and why are they getting additional money when we can't fix some of the problems that we already have to deal with their flooding? I just wanted to make it clear, so it's a little bit more of an understanding as where the money would come from. It's not that I'm not supporting it all, I'm just trying to get clarification so that the residents out there, like the people on Culp Street and other people we're dealing with, have an understanding of where that money's coming from and being allocated. And I also believe that maybe this might be the last year for the funding, because there could be some other destination marketing money that comes into play as well. We don't know that at this time, but still, I think that that doesn't count for this year. That's nineteen. Anyway, that's all. Thank you.
Yeah. Counselor Ainoni.
Thank you, Mr. Merrick. So, when that motion comes forward, I'd like it split, because I don't have any problem funding the original monies that we fund every year. I'm not going to support the additional four hundred thousand. And that, the reason being, not because I don't think the Winter Festival of Lights is great for the community, sure it is, but if you go down your committees, you have a REC committee, Arts and Culture Committee, Committee, Park in the City, Mayor's Youth Advisory, Heritage Committee, but more importantly, St. John's Ambulance, Project Share, Women's Place, YWCA, they were all told to hold at zero increase, and they're all back to us at zero increase. Now, we have spent since November, since New Year's Eve, trying to fund, house, and feed homeless people in different areas of this community. I think you held a walk the other night to raise more money for Project Share. The reason all these have to happen is because they're not funded adequately, and they are continually told to come back to us with zero. So, I have a problem not making them a priority also. And if you're told to come back for zero with, with zero increase for, for agencies that are important for people just to eat in our community, I have a problem increasing things for entertainment. That said, I also want to point out to council, I emailed into Mr. Harrison, and I asked him, "How much of the twenty-five million of 2018 of the OLG money have we spent?" And we've spent, we've allocated already more than half, and it's only February. So, we still have eleven more months to get through the other twelve million dollars, and you have things from TAB 10, Councilor Crater has things that residents are asking for. So, I don't want to be the Scrooge who says, "I, you know, I don't value Winter Festival Lights." I do, but I'm not going to agree, I'm not going to support the additional four hundred thousand when we're asking community, community programs to come in at zero.
Do we have any other questions or comments of council? So, we have an option here. We can deal with this tonight, and for those watching TAB 10, you keep hearing the term TAB 10. Those are the wish lists that we don't necessarily get to address with the current budget. So, we get the OLG funds that come in every year, and out of that, council has some decisions to make. What are their priorities that they want to put their finances behind from the OLG money, from the casinos toward these TAB 10? In case you're wondering what TAB 10 is, Counselor Ainoni.
To that point, for the, for the groups who were told to stay at zero, and I know some of them really had to cut important things to come back at zero, can they come back with a wish list? Because they're seeing two groups come before us tonight asking for huge increases, told to come into us with a zero. Can, if we're deferring this, can maybe they come back with saying, "Look, you told us to cut this. You're adding additional monies here." Can they come back with their additional wish list?
I would imagine they could. I'm sure they do.
But they haven't been directed that. They were directed by our staff to come in at the same, at the same ask, whereas we've got two groups here not being directed to come in at the same ask. So, I just want to make sure that they believe they have a fair playing field.
Counselor Morocco?
Okay. To that point, I have to say that, you know, I know that's fair is fair, but we've actually directed and instructed our staff to say, "You got to come back, because we're not raising the taxes. People don't want to see any more taxes." So, I'm going to have to say that I'm going to make a motion to defer this to, to budget and see where we're at, because it's only fair. I can't do that to one group when I got ten groups and another list of organizations that we've actually just said, "It's zero. Don't come back to us asking for any more money." I, I know it's horrible, because I truly want to support them one hundred percent and if that money, where that money comes from, but at the same time, I, I don't know that we want to like stir up the pot and ask all these organizations to come back with more, because at the end of the day, where's the money coming from?
That's what they're asking.
Where, where's the money going to come from? You don't want to increase the taxes, and we just said that. So, you've got to stay at zero to make sure that we don't. So, that means no additional money.
Okay. So, just before we take...
So, I'm not surprised that we have more groups come back.
Yep. So, just before we take that motion, I know Tina wanted to make a comment, and then we'll take that motion. Yes?
Okay. Just my final comment, just hearing what everyone has to say. The Winter Festival of Lights has not raised their fee for service. We've always kept that at three forty, three hundred and forty-two thousand for several years now, and that was something that we were asked as well not to raise that. About, in 2014, we came to council for the OLG funds in the amount of three hundred thousand. We have come back and were able to do all of the things that you've seen in the presentation over the last few years of adding more and more with that three hundred thousand per year. This year's addition was a hundred thousand on that, so making it the four hundred thousand, and that was for the Cascades of Fire International Fireworks Competition. So, just to, to kind of close out with the fact that this is not above what we had requested the last four years.
Okay. Thank you for that. Counselor Ainoni?
And, and we're not arguing your value, but understand that Project Share can't feed all the people that come in there. So, if they're up fifteen hundred people this year and their budget is not increased, it's hard pressed for us to say, "Yes, we will give you an extra four hundred thousand dollars, but we're going to hold Project Share that feeds families at zero." It's just, it's the tightrope we walk. So, there's, you know, there's not much else we can say. They're, they're equally important to the community, and yet, they're told to hold at zero. So, it's not you. It's, it's right across the board.
Okay. So, we've got a motion from Counselor Morocco that we refer this to budget discussions, which I believe, are they in four weeks at the March meeting, Counselor?
Yeah.
So, it'll be March the 27th will be our budget deliberations where we're going to make the decisions.
But that would be the operating budget.
Operating budget. Oh, right. Exactly. That'd be operating budget, and the OLG money won't be until May?
That's correct.
Okay. So, this is, the motion is to refer this to budget discussion, so this would be the May one, I would guess, then. That'd be the OLG money. Is that right, Kat? Am I right with that?
Yes.
Yeah, but the OLG will be considered in May after we receive it. So, I believe it's imperative of council not to pre-approve money that we haven't received yet, so that should probably be considered at this point as well, we have received the final quarter of the OLG market.
Okay. That's great. Do we have a second or for the motion to refer this to budget?
The original money or the whole thing?
No, the, we're, the, the additional, is that right? Yeah, because they haven't changed their original three forty.
No, we're actually going to have three hundred and forty-two thousand.
No, that's the same. So, the request of the, of the Ontario Winter Game, I'm sorry, of the Winter Festival of Lights being referred to the OLG discussions. So, we have a motion by Counselor Morocco. Do we have a second or to refer it? Okay, seconded by Counselor Strange. Do we have any discussion to the motion? Okay, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay? Okay? That's approved. So, we're going to be dealing with this again in May, when the OLG money comes out. So, to all the volunteers, thank you very much for coming out and for your patience. We appreciate your, your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next up on the agenda is the Niagara Falls Tourism, and here to join us is John Jackson, their Executive Director. John, welcome.
Thank you, your worship, and members of council. I'm honored to be here tonight to share with you some of the results from last year and discuss with you our upcoming marketing campaign and request for the city to once again invest in our campaign at the same amount as last year. We are not asking for an increase this year. This evening, I'm going to provide you with some of the results for tourism in our city. I'm going to talk to you about the importance of tourism to our city and the economic dependence this city has on tourism and how it is a major driver for the city. I'm going to provide you with an overview of 2018's marketing plan and, most importantly, how we will measure the success of our plan this year. First off, I would like to start with a thank you from Niagara Falls Tourism and our entire industry. With your investment of three hundred thousand dollars last year, we were able to secure an additional six hundred thousand dollars from local, regional, provincial, and national partners. And on top of that, due to our relationship with Destination Ontario and Destination Canada, we were able to help secure five hundred thousand dollars for Live with Kelly, one of the most significant marketing activities in the city last year. With these investments, we were able to achieve some incredible things this year for both our city and our industry. Through our marketing activities, we told the story of Niagara Falls to over fifty million Americans, encouraging them to plan a trip to the city. We delivered over one point two million leads to our members. Niagara Falls is second best in the entire country at delivering leads to our partners. Only Travel Alberta delivers more leads, and they have a sixty-five million dollar a year budget. This year, our city hosted fourteen point five million visitors, a number not seen since We were also able to increase the visitor economy. Those fourteen point five million visitors spent over two point three billion dollars in Niagara, driving our economy, contributing to local taxes, and creating jobs. Our hotels continued their success by selling three point four million hotel rooms this year, and Hornblower set another record year for ridership, exceeding two point three million riders. Tourism is Niagara Falls' number one and most important industry. It is the major driver of our economy, and its success is integral to the city, to the success of the city. There are over twenty-five thousand tourism businesses serving locals and visitors to Niagara Falls. These businesses employ over forty-two thousand people and by far are the most important job creator for our city. And these are not low-paying, minimum-wage jobs either. The average salary in the tourism industry for Niagara Falls is forty-six thousand dollars a year. These are careers, ones that allow people to buy a home and build a route in our community. Tourism also contributes taxes to all three levels of government. The tourism sector contributes over fifty-six million dollars a year to the city of Niagara Falls through taxes. If the tourism industry was to disappear, the average homeowner's property taxes would have to increase by over five hundred dollars per year to make up the district. It is vitally important that we continue to invest in the tourism industry for it to keep our city healthy and prosperous and continue to create jobs. To that end, we'd like to request the city's investment in our marketing activities. This investment is used to leverage further dollars, ensuring we not only maintain the health of the industry and the people who work in it, but grow it, creating more jobs and more opportunities. We're not asking for you to be the sole investor. The tourism industry in our city continues to trust us as the stewards for marketing our great city. This year, our partners from industry have invested over two point five million dollars in our activities. Their continued trust combined with your investment allows us to market our city around the world. This year, we're asking you for an investment of three hundred thousand dollars from the OLG contribution. This investment will be allocated one hundred percent to marketing activities and be the start point and used to garner further investment from our regional, provincial, and national partners. This investment, to put it in perspective, would account for point two percent of the total operating budget for Niagara Falls, reinvesting in an industry that delivers forty-one percent of the operational revenue for the city, ensuring its health and its ability to grow. I would now like to take some time to walk you through our plans for this year's marketing activities, beginning with our market priorities. Similar to our provincial partner Destination Ontario and our federal partner Destination Canada, we tier our markets with three different tiers. Tier one markets are ones where we execute consumer-facing campaigns to encourage more people to visit Niagara Falls. Our B to C activities this year will focus on the northeastern United States and Ontario, primarily driving activities into the major urban centers of New York City, Boston, Cleveland, Chicago, Baltimore, Washington, Philadelphia, and Detroit. As you know, 2018 is the Canada-China year of tourism. China is also the fastest-growing market for Canada and Niagara. With that in mind, we're exploring entering into a partnership with Destination Ontario, Tourism Ontario, Toronto, and Ottawa Tourism to do a consumer campaign in China. We're in the early stages of this exploration, and we'll have more details as we progress. These markets are our most valuable and the ones that we have the most potential. To further refine our marketing activities, we look at a psychographic segmentation. We target three different segments using a tool that has been developed by Destination Ontario. Our first segment is the family memory builders. Typically, thirty-five to fifty-four years old, they are parents who have built their lives around their children. To them, non-work activities are all about their kids and what they can do with them. This includes picking vacation locations that they can travel to and experience together. Our second segment are the connected explorers, young couples under forty. They are confident, youthful, and optimistic. They love to travel and have new experiences. They are the driving force behind the new reason to travel, which is transformational. They are not just looking to experience things, but be transformed by a city's culture or history. Our final segment is the outgoing mature couple. They are the retired couples aged fifty-five plus and travel to enjoy the company of others and love socializing. These three segments align with the product offerings here in Niagara Falls and have high percentage of the populations in the target mark, in the geographic market. high percentage of the populations in the target mark, in the geographic markets we For our theme this year, we will continue using the positioning statement Explore Niagara, which encourages visitors to go deeper, stay longer, and do more things. To expand it this year, we are adding the new, the iconic, and the unknown. With the goal of increasing length of stay and as a result, per gas yield, we feel this will be the perfect platform to achieve this. The iconic illustrates the falls as the perfect blend of rural landmarks, historical significance, unique adventure, and city characteristics, all within a vibrant region that embodies the Canadian culture sitting just north of the US border. Niagara Falls' bountiful spectacular imagery makes it a well-known bucket list brand among Americans, many of which are also aware of who, of how accessible the destination is. These attractions, such as Hornblower Cruises, Niagara Parks' Journey Behind the Falls, Niagara Helicopter, the Niagara Skywheel, and the Skyline Tower are often socialized the most as proud moments that have been shared in their journey. The new Niagara Speedway, the Whirlpool Adventure Course, the Niagara Parks' Fireworks Series, and Cascades of Fire, the International Fireworks Competition, will focus on recent and upcoming experiences not available in the previous season. This segment will push travelers to experience attractions beyond the natural wonder. The unknown group will highlight lesser-known products, Hornblower's fireworks cruises, Journey Behind the Falls After Dark, cycling, historic site, the growth of breweries and distilleries, and more. These experiences are not very well-known beyond the destination, but are big draws that continue to diversify Niagara Falls as a destination. Using user-generated content that showcases real people in the experience, we will move people through the path to purchase, delivering more leads than ever to our members. Using the city's investment, we will leverage additional dollars from our partners. Working with ones that are local, regional, provincial, and national, we will be able to tell the story of Niagara Falls to more people, encouraging them to visit our city. Your investment is integral as the baseline to attract these partners to our activities. As in everything we do, we measure to see if we are being successful. Without measuring our activities, we would never know if we have achieved our goals. Our goals for this year are 5 million visitors to our website, up six, almost 600,000; 1.4 million leads to industry, a growth of 18% versus last year. These leads our partners can convert into bookings or ticket sales; 125,000 social media engagements. Just because we have someone visit our city doesn't mean our job is finished. Now we need to convert them into brand ambassadors, and social is the key. More and more, social is the deciding factor in travel decisions. Peer-to-peer recommendations are the most trusted source. By encouraging others to brag about how great Niagara Falls is, we will encourage more people to visit. Thank you for your time this evening. I look forward to continuing our partnership, helping increase the economy of Niagara Falls, and would respectfully request the investment decision be made this evening if possible to enable us to begin leveraging those dollars through other partnerships. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Uh, do we have any questions or comments of council? Counselor Thompson?
Um, first of all, uh, thank you for the information. I think there's some key elements that have to be brought up here. Forty-two thousand jobs in our community, uh, which is shared around the region. And we're talking about $300,000 out of the OLG funds, uh, which really is different than anything else because it's really 30 cent dollars because we go and get, uh, 300,000 federally, uh, provincially, and, uh, this is what we put our marketing program on to get people to come here to feed the jobs. And I'm glad you brought up about, uh, the, uh, people used to say to me, uh, the tourism, minimum-wage jobs. Every time you build a 30-story hotel, you get, uh, the manager maybe 120, 150, uh, you've got mechanics, you've got electricians, you've got maintenance, you've got, uh, great paying jobs, and this is what makes our, uh, our economy survive. So, um, I think this is a no-brainer. Uh, it's the same as we asked for last year, and, uh, it really is the lifeblood of this community. Uh, if this was denied or turned down, uh, you'd have some serious jobs. There'd be more people going to project share than you can imagine. So, um, I'll give the opportunity to anybody else who wants to make comment or ask questions, but, uh, I have no problem making a motion to, uh, move forward with this investment because if you don't, if you're going to leave this till May, we're out of the picture as far as 30 cent dollars, uh, we won't be able to get from federal, provincial, and it'll ruin our marketing opportunity. 14.5 million people coming here, wow, that's, uh, anyway, um, I'll give the opportunity to anybody else who could comment.
Thank you, Counsel Strange.
Yes, George, John, I just want to thank you for the presentation. It was excellent. I just, uh, I think you've got to put it in perspective, like, what Niagara Falls, Niagara Falls is tourism. That's what our industry is. And you realize all the jobs, um, that come with that. And if we didn't support this, you think, and you always talk about that ripple effect, you know, the job creations, uh, you know, people staying here for more than one day, now they're staying for three or four days, staying in our hotels, eating our restaurants. Um, and think about the, if we didn't do this marketing, and you take the OLG funds for, for instance, and 25 million this year, and say we didn't support this, which I think would be crazy, and we lost the visitors coming here next year, and they didn't come to the casino, they didn't come here, and all of a sudden, our 25 million went to 22 million, and we lost 3 million. So you do the comparison, you know, adding $300,000 in marketing and maybe the possibility of losing next year. Because I remember people saying, "Well, why don't we just back away for a year and not support this?" But I think every year, we've been getting more and more and more from the OLG, and that has to do with, with people coming here. And it would be like asking someone, you know, the council in Waterloo not supporting their tech industry, which is just humongous, and it's made that, that region, that city in Kitchener just massive. So I will second that motion, uh, to Counsel Thompson when, when the time comes and, um, well, and all the hard work that the tourism board and, and John even do it.
Thank you.
Do we have any discussion, any other discussion? Yep, Counsel Rynoni.
Where are we taking this money from right now? How, first of all, how much is it?
300,000.
300,000 from the OLG plus the 342?
340, yeah, 360.
Niagara Falls is 360.
Yeah, that'd come from their, the operating budget.
So 360, which was our fee for service for them?
Correct.
And what is the additional 300,000 for?
Marketing activities. It's, it goes into pure marketing activities.
So it is additional money?
Yes, it is. But it is the same amount that we received from the city last year.
That was additional money?
Um, yeah, we received $660,000 last year from the city of Niagara Falls.
I think, was that not the last two years or the last two years?
It was the last two years, but it was supposed to be for a program that, wasn't it for a program that, an initiative to do something in regards to casinos and?
It was for marketing activities.
And did you say it was going to continue to be an ongoing process? I, I believe when they came to us the first year, it was just for that one-time year, and now we're sitting at the third year. Um, Jill, we're looking, we're looking at, um, meeting with the stakeholders again in regards to a transient tax, and I know that there's conversation going back and forth and how all of this will be funded after this year. Um, if he's not asking for any more money than last year, I can see us referring it to the budget, so.
Uh, Counsel Thompson?
Um, yes, um, this last two years, it's a decision of council regarding the OLG funds for economic development, and these are 30 cent dollars. You cannot, uh, refer to May because otherwise it's, uh, we lose 600,000 dollars from other levels of government. So, anyway, um, uh, if you can't understand this, uh, you don't know, haven't got a clue what goes on in this community. So I'll make the motion that we, uh, approve the, uh, OLG funds, which are set aside for economic development by this council to make sure we take advantage of a marketing program to sustain the, the casino and all of the other jobs that we hear and the funding that we get from the casino.
Okay, we've got a motion by Counsel Thompson?
Yeah, I'll, I'll second. I just want to speak to that as well. And just remember, part of the marketing and stuff, and it's, it's having people coming and spending money at the casino, and our OLG funds have increased from 22 to 25 because of marketing techniques like this. So do you risk not giving money and losing that, that leverage? And they've gone up every year, so second that motion.
Okay, so we've got a motion, sec, yes, Counsel Crater?
I'll go ahead and leave you, George.
No, no, I'm just going to say we have a motion by Counsel Thompson, seconded by Counsel Strange, and if there's no further discussion, yep, Counsel.
Only one short comment is, I'm trying to be fair here, like, I just listened to the Festival of Lights. We actually asked for exactly the same thing, and we made a decision that we would wait till May, and they gave the same explanation that they needed to know now, but we still thought it was the appropriate thing to do. So we're not really being fair to, then maybe we should just bring back the Festival of Lights and put them back on the table and start all of, then I'd go down to Culp Street and tell all the people there, they gave me the petition, that I'm, I'm going to bring it up today, and I'd like to have a decision made tonight on that street. I mean, that, I think that's fair to everybody, you know? So I will do that tonight, at the end of the meeting on the new business, I'm going to get a motion on the floor that we just go ahead and approve Culp Street for the residents who've been waiting and waiting. I know Mike, Counsel Mike would support me on that. Uh, but I, I'm, and I apologize, I shouldn't have said that to you. I'm, I'm just frustrated because, I'm not frustrated with tourism or anything, I'm not frustrated with, just, we're getting all the phone calls from the residents who are saying, "What about me?" That's what they're saying. You can get mad at me because I say it, and I know some of the counselors don't think I should be saying that, but we are, and I'm not being critical of everyone. So what we're going to do now is what we didn't do for the Festival of Lights. And for them, we said we will, we will wait, but for here, we're going to say that we're going to go ahead, and that's the motion on the floor, we're going to go ahead and fund it right now.
Well, that's the motion.
That's the motion. Okay, I got it. Thank you very much, thank you.
Counsel Thompson, yep?
Well, first of all, um, in May, we can make the decision for the Festival of Lights to, uh, make sure that happens for the program. This one, we have to do it now to make sure we get 600,000 dollars to go with it, to make sure we have a program. Totally different, we can do both.
I support. What Counsel Thompson's saying is, uh, this is going to go with matching dollars, provincially and federally, with the Niagara Falls Tourism ask, so that's why it's timely to get the other two-thirds of the matching ask. So we have a motion by Counsel Tom, yes, Counsel?
Yep, yep. Thanks for your patience, George. I have one last question. I think it was a, uh, Counsel Morocco, she did raise a very good point, and I'm just sitting here thinking about this. I do remember, when we go back and, and during my term of office, that when we came up with this, I'm sure I'm right, but when the provincial government came up with this idea of changing the funding formula, because we were only getting three or three and a half million dollars a year for two casinos, remember, we had fought to try to get more. I said, I did, I did think there were conditions placed on the OLG funding money. Uh, I remember we talked about that, you and Mr. Todd about that. There were conditions placed by the provinces, by the province to each community that got the OLG new funding model, and I, and I wish Mr. Todd was here, but I did recall that I thought one of the obligations was that you had to use some of it for economic development. There were certain conditions, but remember, we had that discussion, there were certain things, you couldn't just?
It was by the council.
Yeah, but no, it was by the province, the province made, made the rules, that you had, am I wrong? Mr. Mayor, remember?
Part of, yeah, part of it was for, is for economic development.
But that was a condition of the province?
Some of the funds, yes. Some of the funds should be allocated. They didn't have it tight, uh, but they did suggest some of the, uh, conditions would be that it would be for economic development.
Do you recall if there was a percentage of how much should be?
No, I don't believe it was specified that succinct.
You know what I'm leading to, and maybe what should be happening is, and maybe we aren't even spending what we're supposed to be spending under economic development. If we had that more clearly defined, then we could say the rest?
It wasn't that clearly defined, no.
You know what I was leading towards? And see if it fit in that category. Okay, thanks.
Okay, so, um, if we're ready then, we've got the motion moved by Counsel Thompson, seconded by Counsel Strange, that we do in fact?
Record a vote?
Okay, recorded vote, that we do in fact approve the 300,000 dollars that's being asked of Niagara Falls Tourism tonight. There's been a request for a recorded vote, so we're going to ask the?
I'm sorry, we're not passing their, their entire budget, including the other?
Right, the other 360 is going to be dealt with at operating.
Your operational budget is coming to us at a different time?
In four weeks.
This is a marketing budget.
Correct. This is OLG funds for the marketing budget. The operating will be dealt with in four weeks at the March 27th meeting, and Counsel, the Chair, Pia Angel, will run that one.
Can I ask a question then?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, I had asked a question in regards to, a couple budgets ago, there was a $22,000 cost, and it was called PPG Media, or whatever, and, and Mr. Harrison sent it out and said it was, um, money the city used to market the city. Okay, so if we're giving 300,000 dollars to Niagara Falls Tourism, why are we using 22,000 dollars out of property tax money then to market tourism? Because that is exactly how Mr., not Mr. Todd, uh, Mr. Harrison answered me. This was money you, you, I don't ever remember seeing us approve it, but are we using city money to market the city and then money to market? Because if we're handing them 300,000 dollars out of OLG because that's what OLG gave it to us for, I have no problem supporting that, but then I do not want to see property tax dollars used to market the city for tourism.
Well, Mr. Harrison's not here tonight, unfortunately, so I don't, and I don't know the answer to that question. So he'll be back next meeting. We can find that out.
Okay.
Okay, we're ready to call the vote? Mr. Crater? One more comment, yes? Counsel Thompson?
Um, I don't know where that 22, what'd you say, 22 what?
It was 22, and he said it was to market the city for tourism.
Well, let's clear that up. That doesn't exist.
I'm going to find it.
Okay, I don't know what it is.
Does anybody know that?
I'm going to pull it up right now.
Doesn't exist, no, doesn't exist. Anyway, the other maybe positive thing that I can say, uh, which, uh, we've been working on for a long time, but, uh, they have the, um, accommodation tax that was approved by the province. Uh, I was in a meeting yesterday, and, uh, a lot of the major stakeholders came together, and, uh, they have agreed on a format, uh, that, that they're going to deal with the, uh, all of the BIAs to get their buy-in from all stakeholders, and this could be, uh, the last time any dollars are spent on, uh, tourism, uh, from this municipality. They would be taking over, uh, the Winter Festival of Lights, the Niagara Falls Tourism, uh, the fireworks, uh, the special events. This could be a game changer, but this is crucial for this year, and this, uh, they'll be coming to us shortly to ask us, uh, if we can approve this tax, uh, which is not going to be a percentage, it's going to be a per-room, uh, tax, and, uh, I think it's going to work out very well.
That's great, thank you very much. Counsel Rynoni?
Just to clear it up, it was 22,500 dollars to PGG for the development of a promotional video used to promote the city of Niagara Falls to other North American and international shows. So here's my thing.
So that's a workforce attraction.
I don't believe we should be paying for that then. I think if we are paying, and, and I'll support his motion, but I don't think then that tax money should go to create promotional videos, I think that should all be done at a Niagara Falls Tourism.
So, uh, appreciate that. That video, and I know what you're talking about, that was approved by this council to create videos for shows like Ellen and to invite them to do the same way that we had. had Kelly and Ryan Seacrest, the live show here. So, that was approved by this council as a marketing, to promote the city specifically, but I believe that's a marketing budget for destination marketing that they're looking to do, something totally separate. We're trying to lure a specific segment, shows here, live shows, and theirs is for marketing the destination. Two totally separate, that's what that other one was, I recall that now. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Clerk, let's get it going. We're gonna be here all night.
Okay, it was ordered on the motion of Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Strange, that council fund the Niagara Falls Tourism in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars from OLG funds that are set aside for economic development for their marketing budget. Counselor Crater?
In favor.
Counselor Iannone?
In favor.
Counselor Cario?
Conflict.
Sorry, thank you. Counselor Morocco?
Conflict.
Conflict as well. Counselor Peter Angelo?
Yes.
Counselor Strange?
In favor.
And Counselor Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor Doudadi?
Four.
And that's carried.
Okay, thank you for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Your Worship and Counselor.
Thank you to the Niagara Falls Tourism people for being here tonight, too. Thank you. Jump ahead here. Which one is, which one is it? It's the...
Don't.
Okay. Oh, right, 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 of course. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna jump around in our agenda a little bit here tonight. We do have a scheduled planning meeting for six-thirty tonight, so we're gonna go to the planning portion of the meeting. So, I'd ask if our city clerk, our city acting clerk would introduce the next item on the agenda, please.
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw to permit a one-hundred-and-nineteen or a one-hundred-and-four unit townhouse complex and a five-story fifty-two unit apartment building at eighty-nine six zero Willoughby Drive. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, January twenty-six, two thousand and eighteen, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment to participate in any site plan process, if applicable, or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the interior municipal board, shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, now I'd ask, I'd like to ask our Director of Planning, Mr. Hurlovich, to explain the purpose and reason for the proposed bylaw amendment.
Thank you, Your Worship. This property is the former Rutland School property in Chippewa. The property is founded by, excuse me, Willoughby Drive on the west and Weinbrenner Road on the north. It's thirteen-point-two hectares in size. The lands to the west are used for recreational purposes, they're single-family houses. To the east is the Legends Golf Course. The property involves actually a variation on two possible proposals. The first one is for a one-hundred-and-four townhouse units. Those are shown predominantly on the area where the school operated, on the west side of the site, onto Weinbrenner. There are a few townhouses along the, along the north side and a proposed apartment building on the east side. There's a large provincially significant wetland in the center of the property. The developer has proposed a ten-meter buffer. I realize it's rather hard to see, but there is a dotted line that would serve as a buffer area around that wetland.
Can you show us that, Alex?
Area. So, let's, here's, here's the line showing ten-meter buffer. So, basically a line, so this line that you can clearly see is the wetland boundary, and so there's a line about halfway between the townhouse units here and the edge of the forest here that is the ten-meter buffer. The, the second scheme then is actually exactly the same for the townhouses on the west side of the site, and then along the north side, this is townhouses in this corner rather than being townhouses and an apartment block. That's really the only difference. The same provincially significant wetlands would be preserved and the ten-meter buffer around that. This area here is a forested area, which is outside of the wetland, but again, is a natural heritage feature on the property. The, so the applicant has requested that the parcel be rezoned to allow the townhouse, either one-hundred-and-nineteen townhouses or the one-hundred-and-four townhouses with a five-story fifty-two unit building. Property's currently zoned rural. There is a provincially significant wetland, I mentioned that, and the balance of the property would be zoned for low-density grouped multiple dwellings in an R4 zone. The R4 zone permits both townhouses and apartments. The, we did have a neighborhood open house in January on this property. We had one neighbor come out. He expressed concerns about noise and dust from construction, the routing of construction traffic, traffic safety and speeding along Willoughby Drive, which is a current problem. He wondered how services would be accessed for the property, and he wondered about the timing of the development. The developer responded to those concerns which are listed on the screen. The, in doing our planning analysis, we found that the property proposal does comply with the provincial policy statements and the provincial growth plan. Those documents require forty percent of our residential development be within the built-up area of the city, which being a former school site, this site is in our built-up boundaries. The development would make efficient use of our urban lands, provide for a mix of housing choices, to serve the needs of the residents of the city. The proposed development is a form of residential intensification, which is promoted by the city and will aid the city in achieving its intensification target as well. The official plan designates the lands as both residential and environmental protection. The residential policies anticipate a development of twenty to forty units per hectare. The, if we just developed at the town, I should say, on Collector Roads, those densities could increase to fifty to seventy-five units per hectare with heights of up to four stories. If we just proceed with the townhouse development of a hundred and, what'd I say, a hundred-and-nineteen units, the property would have a density of seventeen units per hectare, so just slightly under our minimum. If the townhouses and apartments proceed, they would have slightly over the minimum at twenty units per hectare. The proposed townhouses and apartment building have been designed to be compatible with the neighboring housing in terms of height, massing and setbacks. The apartment building has been placed on the east side of the property to put it as far away from existing housing as possible. There is a minor increase in the apartment building height, which is acceptable because it is removed from the adjacent residences. The provincially significant wetlands would be remain, maintained as an environmental protection area, and they would be a ten-meter undisturbed buffer area included. The zoning bylaw, as I said, is rural, and the request is to change this to an R4 zone, which would allow the townhouses and apartments. There's a PSW, which would be environmental protection, and then there's a chart showing you where the deviations are from the standard R4 requirements. So, they're looking for a building height for the apartment building only, to move from ten meters maximum to fifteen meters. The, looking for a, a privacy yard setback, this is the area behind the townhouses, instead of seven-point-five meters, they're looking for six meters. That would be in addition to the ten-meter buffer from the wetlands. And then everywhere else that doesn't abut a wetland, they're looking for a rear yard of seven meters instead of the standard seven-point-five meters. The, what's not included in the slide, because it wasn't in your report, is that we did receive comments from the, the Conservation Authority. Those are in your package tonight. Basically, the Conservation Authority is requesting a thirty-meter buffer, whereas the developer is requesting a ten-meter buffer around the wetland. The developer did provide an environmental impact study. That was a requirement in order to receive this. The qualified expert that prepared that study found that a ten-meter buffer would be sufficient. The Conservation Authority said there was a lack of detail in that report, and therefore they're asking for a thirty-meter buffer. So, that maybe can be addressed by the developer and/or his consultant to come forward, but I didn't want to skip over that detail because it is in your packages. The, therefore, when we looked at this, then we concluded that the proposal does make efficient use of our urban land, it will take advantage of the existing infrastructure, and it provides intensification that's promoted by the province, conforms with our city's official plan. It is located along a Collector Road. The proposed environmental protection zone would be in conformity with the city's environmental protection policies and would protect the provincially significant wetland on the property. The R4 zone will provide for either townhouses or an apartment building. The apartment building would be restricted to the east end of the site, as I identified. There would be a holding provision included on the property to secure clearance on the archaeological study that's required by the Ministry of Tourism, Culture and Sport. Therefore, staff is recommending that council can approve the zoning bylaw amendment, application to rezone this property from rural to an R4 and for the environmental protection area subject to the regulations outlined in the report and including a holding provision for the archaeological study. Those are the highlights of the report.
Thank you, Mr. Hurlovich. We're now looking for questions of council. I've got Counselor Peter Angelo, and then Cario and Morocco.
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship, and I just had a question through you to the planner. Alex, we received a letter today from the NPCA, and just looking at the recommendations, they used two words in the recommendation I found interesting. One was requires and the other one was recommends. And in terms of the word requires, they are saying that the PSW, or the PSW shall be rezoned to an EPA. And then in the word recommends, they're using that another area they're recommending be changed over to an ECA or Environmental Conservation Area. And I guess I'm wondering where jurisdiction lies in terms of who has the ultimate authority for these? When the NPCA is recommending to a municipality that a designated piece of land have a certain established designation attached to it, the municipality, I wouldn't think, would have any leeway in actually adopting that. So, when they're telling us that they're requiring that this piece of land shall be rezoned from the PSW to an EPA, the municipality has no jurisdiction in not doing that. I'm just wondering, Your Worship, if that statement is, is right, because, I mean, I would think that if the NPCA is saying that these lands should be designated as such, then we don't have a choice in the matter, but maybe I'm wrong.
Mr. Hurlovich?
Thank you, Your Worship. The, in answer to the counselor's question, the Niagara Peninsula Conservation Authority has regulations in place. Those regulations specify a thirty-meter buffer around a provincially significant wetland. However, those can be adjusted, and that's typically done through an environmental impact study. So, as I said, the consult, or the developer did use a consultant who prepared such a study. They've submitted that study, and the consultant's opinion is ten meters would be adequate, just for the benefit of council. That's typically what we've seen happen in the Warren Woods subdivision just west of Niagara Square. Most of those residential developments are ten meters away from the PSWs that are in that neighborhood, just to give you some context. The, so, the Conservation Authority's regulations are thirty meters, but they can adjust them if they're satisfied with the study. At this point, they're saying they don't feel that they've got all of the details they would like to authorize the reduction to ten meters.
Counselor? Thank you.
Thanks, Your Worship, and I, I understand what the environmental impact study was, but that wasn't even part of my question. I was, my question was more in relation to the PSW being rezoned from PSW to EPA, and who has the ultimate authority in making that call? Is it the municipality? Do we have to adopt the recommendation because the NPCA says so? Or is that our recommendation going forward? That was more my question, Your Worship.
So, who makes the decision on the designation, whether it's PSW or EPA?
The city's current official plan designates the lands as environmental protection, and council should be passing zoning bylaws that reflect its official plan, so therefore, the PSW should be designated environmental protection.
And the authority, his question is, who's, under whose authority? Is it decided by the province, by the, by who?
The council is mandated by the province under the Planning Act to make sure that its official plan and zoning bylaw conform. So, this council should be making sure that it's, their decisions comply with their policy document.
Okay.
It's this council that will decide.
Okay, thank you. Yep, Mr. Beeman?
This particular decision is not dictated by the Conservation Authority. I think that's the answer that the council's looking for, that there is discretion within council to decline to follow the recommendation of the Conservation Authority, given that there is a study which meets the regulation, or could, if council satisfied, be seen to meet the regulation to establish a ten-meter setback.
Your Worship, just to follow up, the only reason for my question is because if you read the conclusions of the NPCA, you'll see that in one instance, they're requiring, and in another instance, they're recommending. So, in one instance, they're saying the municipality shall, and they use the word shall, and in the other instance, they're recommending. That's the only reason why I was wondering where the ultimate authority lies.
Okay, thank you for that. I've got Counselor Cario, and then Morocco.
Your Worship, I was just gonna ask why this letter from the NPCA, we got it today, end of the day, the twenty-third. So, it came in our planning department on the twenty-third, and it only came into the clerk's hands to pass it on to us today. Why didn't we get it on the twenty-third?
Actually, twenty-second, it says twenty-second now.
Well, stamped the twenty-third on mine, but...
Stamped the twenty-third.
Today's the twenty-seventh. I don't know, why, why would we not have got that when we got the rest of our package?
Yeah, and it said by email as well, so I don't know why it wouldn't be the same date. Do we have any comment on that?
I can only apologize for the delay in getting this to council. We did receive it in our office on Friday, and it should have gone immediately to the clerk's office. I'll investigate that when I get down. We almost always get those comments directly from our office to the clerk's office so that it can be included in the council's package. These comments were late. Usually, we require them ten days before we finish our report. Our planner was working on this file, was hounding the Conservation Authority for these comments, and as I said, our report was already finished, so we couldn't even address the comments in, in our report.
We answered, you answered one other part of my question, was they were late coming from the NPCA as well?
They were late coming from the Conservation Authority, and it was my responsibility to make sure they got to clerks. It didn't happen, and make sure that doesn't happen again.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Morocco?
I think most of my questions have been asked, but just to add...
I think most of my questions been asked, but just, uh, to add on to counsel, Carrio, so, did they not know about the public meeting? Obviously, these organizations probably would have known, and I just don't understand. Like, I looked at this, I thinking that this project is fine, I'm okay to go ahead and approve this project, because it didn't seem that anybody was really having a difficult time with it. Uh, and then here we have this letter from the Conservation Authority. But anyway, and the delay, so here we are with a letter that we haven't fully understood. But are we in the compliance? I, I think you're saying approve it. I'm sorry, just to make sure that, but even in regards to the letter that we received from the Niagara Peninsula Conservation Authority, Alex, are you saying that we're still recommending that we go ahead and support the, uh, planning application?
Yes, I believe that. Planning is supporting the application. I believe the solicitor answered the question. It's council's decision.
Okay. Follow up, Your Worship?
Yeah, follow up.
Well, it's, it's not fair to us, because we didn't see it. But I'm, I don't know whether the developer saw it, and if they haven't seen it, really not fair to the developer. That's really, I don't know how they can function. If they don't get this, how are they supposed to answer it? How are they supposed to have a rebuttal for us if they didn't, if they didn't get it? They might not have even got it today.
Well, do we know, Mr. Hrlavich, if the developer received a copy of that?
Well, as soon as the questions are finished, we'll hear from the developer.
We can ask?
Yes, he was sent it on Friday.
On Friday? Okay. All right, thank you for that. Uh, Counselor Crater? No, you're, okay? All right, great. So if there's no further questions at this point, members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting will result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referral that it receives. Failure to sign the sign-in sheet will result in staff rejecting an appeal as per section 3419 of the Planning Act. Council will now hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Do we have anyone? Yes? Yes, you can step up to the microphone, please, and if you'd state your name and your address, please. And you've got five minutes. Thank you.
Five minutes?
Yes.
Linda Manson, 4732 Cookman Crescent, Niagara Falls. Five minutes. Okay. First of all, that letter that you got this afternoon from the NPCA, it trumps everything. Uh, growth plan stipulates that provincial policy statement dominates on provincial, uh, provincially significant wetlands. The recommended, recommended, thank you, Counselor Peter Angelo, recommended and, uh, required, recommended 120 meters. NPCA puts an absolute minimum of 130 unless it is, um, it is justified. That letter you got today says it was not. Uh, and it specifies, it's four pages. It's scathing, okay? I started, I did this, I've been working on this for two weeks, because this thing went out as a, like, a, just a, a neighborhood thing. This is a provincially significant wetland. It's, it is part of the, um, the Usher's Creek, uh, wetland complex, which is regionally significant. Um, I'll, I'll start with what I, what I had here. The zoning applicant could have taken a high road in recognition of what and where these lands are and proposed a plan for ample profit with no objections. Instead, he chose to release a trial balloon to see if it would fly, in spite of some gaping holes. If he had proposed development totally within the former school grounds, that would have made sense. Leave sufficient meadow as a buffer, some parkland for the kids to play, great. When seeing the public notice of this meeting in front of the school rubble or hearing about neighborhood open house, that's probably what most people thought, but seemingly that wasn't enough, and not what the developer has in mind. Passing all that open space? Who would even imagine? They also plan to cut down close to four football fields of woodland at the hidden far corner of the property to within 10 meters of a wetland where there's a, that you're now hearing, cannot be less than 30 meters. And the reason why they said 10 is because the 30 does away with the northeast corner. It also does away with the one strip of properties along here. It's a very basic thing. Um, they wanted to squeeze in a five-story condo overlooking the golf course. First clue, the name, Legends Estates. Um, I'll just have to run through this. It's a provincially significant wetland. It's regulated by the NPCA. They act under the Ministry of Natural Resources. They are the people who enforce it down here. Okay? It's earmarked for restoration, and they want to make sure that all of this whole complex, which feeds our waterway in the Niagara River, is taken care of. Um, I won't go into all this thing. There's some things that happen with this whole thing that's unbelievable. Um, provincial policy requires that the development within 120 meter of a provincially significant wetland and within 50 meters of a, uh, a regionally, um, a regional, uh, environmental conservation area of woodland, which this has as well, uh, requires environmental impact study, an EIS, in theory, to ensure that the resulting negative impact, environmental, no environmental impact. Especially important because this is a Pin Oak mineral deciduous swamp, ranked as rare in Ontario. Bad news is, the EIS, as usual, is prepared by a consultant hired by the developer, in some cases followed up by an independent peer review requested by the city, in this case, not. Okay, blah, blah, blah. There are things within this thing. There was an initial, uh, NPCA letter written last April, um, saying that, um, hey, the maps you people are using are 2006, they're from the region. It's not jiving with what we're seeing from our aerial photographs. So, um, to their credit, the, you know, in the boots, in the bush, and did, uh, surveys, and Loan Mahoa came up with the fact that, yeah, okay, it was here, now it's up here. They determined, okay, where it was, the EIS people. Um, that was all sent to them. Nothing, but nothing that happened, um, since then. No correspondence. I have emails to the, to the planning department. There's been no correspondence, nothing, nothing on record, that anything was ever followed up. Um, okay, so there was, in the same letter, there were two other, uh, critical instructions. Quote, "It appears that the proposed development may be proposed entirely outside of the natural vegetated portion of the property and is scoped as such." That means they told him what to do and where to grow it in all measure, based on the fact that it was supposed to be just, not even in the woodlands at all, not that northeast corner at all. If you, uh, if you propose to develop within the drip line of the woodland, a, a rescoping will be required. Curious. The plan before you calls for chopping down of three and a half acres of woodland, so did the original plan not include development on that Edgeworth section? Was it downplayed, or the NPCA's very capable supervisor of watershed biology missed that? The answer is, a second pre-consultation meeting was held with the NPCA in September, quote, "to discuss the potential for development along Edgeworth." The problem with that was that the terms of reference used for this environmental impact study submitted to the NPCA for review and approval, and circulated to the city and region staff, her comment were seemingly based on scoping and involved no removal of any forest. Yet there it is in front of you. Was it approved by the NCBA? This, I did this all until this afternoon. I got it. It went on the site this afternoon, the same as you people. Nobody knew this, okay? This whole thing is based on the fact that there was nothing put in here. Uh, was it approved by the NPCA? In, uh, the environmental impact, uh, study appendix B claiming to include all of the correspondence, nothing but that first letter. Planning told me last week that they hadn't received anything on Thursday. I had put in on February 15th, and I'm really sorry that I'm only being, being given five minutes, because I've been working my butt off for two weeks trying to prepare this. Um, so in your package, under the heading of circulation comments beside Niagara Peninsula Conservation, squat, blank, right? Tell you got this thing this afternoon. Second critical point of contention was that the plan must meet, clearly meet the NPCA minimum 30-meter buffer for provincially significant wetlands. Yes, you can justify with an expert what they did. These are experts at NPCA. They are our guardians. They are the staff who know, they are the people who enforce. It's not an option. You don't, you don't go over, you don't override the NPCA on this. They are the ministry from, they represent the Ministry of Natural Resources at this level on this issue. Plus, um, so they're recommending 30 meter plus an additional, uh, four meters that must be included to ensure future ongoing maintenance. So doing the math, that's like 34 meters, okay? And that it must clearly be marked on the plan. It wasn't ever. Only a 10-meter buffer total, with no PCA comment. By the way, the provincial policy statement recommends 120, as I said. Okay, um...
Are you able to wrap it up, Linda?
Yeah, sure.
Seven minutes, yeah?
This is really unfortunate. Um, discrepancies. Um, the planning background proposal in your agenda package states that the applicant requesting, um, uh, a wetland buffer be rezoned environmental impact area. You don't even have what is being proposed. Did you see a thing that had all green and all yellow? Did you see that anywhere? It's called Schedule A.
Are you asking council?
I'm asking, I'm sorry, through you two. Do you have it?
Schedule A?
You have two, you have two maps with outline of, of, of a thing. The wording states in this thing, this, by the way, you can't pass this, because I have never been to OMB, but I would love this one. It's a real simple thing. There's a solution to this, but, um, um, you can't do this the way it is. Um, the map, the wording on the, on the, on the, on the proposal from planning is, um, that, um, uh, that the applicant is requesting, uh, okay, that the provincially significant wetland and associated buffer be rezoned. That's that little thing that goes around there. The thing that they, that, on Schedule A, which you never even received, was supposed to be, this whole big thing was supposed to be in environmental protection, and then, and then the rest of it was going to be residential. Why don't you have that? It's, uh, it, this, uh, this frightens me. The other thing that frightens me are the statements, uh, on the EIS, like, quote, "The city plan policy 11.2.12 states that no development or site alteration shall be permitted within an EPA unless otherwise approved by the NPCA." They're not going to be approving that. It would have, it was really frightening me until today. I was so proud of the NPCA today. I'm telling you, the staff did a great job. Um, there's a discrepancy, there's typos abounding in this thing, and it really tells a story. On the one, on one case, they, they refer to this as, uh, um, with the brief description to the N, to the Guelph NPC, or NR, MNRF, rather, they talked about it as being with Edgemere Road. Okay? Then when they were referring on, when they put out that, uh, the, the, the background for the, um, for the EIS, they put, they put that it was, uh, the Fort Erie Creeks watershed plan. Fort Erie Creeks watershed plan versus Niagara Falls watershed. Uh, was it questioned by anyone? No correspondence correcting it for the second, for the, for the record. And the coincidence, the same developer has a proposal in the works involving cutting down trees, uh, in the Waverly Woodlot, part of the Fort Erie Creeks watershed adjacent to Edgemere Road. And the EIS was prepared by the same company, cotton paste errors on an, at an environmental impact study that's going to potentially ruin one of our major watersheds. Okay?
I'll have to get you to wrap it up.
Okay, I will.
In 10 minutes.
But in that case, at least on the, as a condition of final approval, the owner will be, uh, required to enter into a legal agreement to convey some of those forests to the town or the NPCA. Was, um, was, was he even approached about that here? Okay, um, the EIS states that all agencies, including the MNRF, were consulted on the onset of this study with correspondence confirming that, but where? That's where the trail ends. Okay? So how is it possible this application could be sitting in front of you? And I am winding down. Thank you. Uh, more importantly, what could be done about it? Send it back to the drying boards, okay? It's a great idea to be providing this kind of housing, but you have to understand, there was one thing on that Schedule A which you do not have, is the title, condos. You have apartment buildings. There's a big difference. Um, send it back to the drying boards, to what would appear to have been the original proposal without that Edgeworth section, a proposal that puts laws above profits but still makes it worth his while. Zone everything beyond the meadows, which is what the NPCA is, is saying here, environmental protection. They also throw in some other areas in conservation for the core natural heritage system that it is. Give it the buffer it needs to survive and support the wildlife within, and give the developer a toxin incentive or something to, to keep it as is with an agreement like Fort Erie, to convey it to the city or NPCA or the Niagara Parks for proper protection forever, in keeping with the municipal, regional, and provincial laws. And by the way, there are heritage components of those provincial laws, you know, and not one of them is mentioned, okay? To offset his potential loss, take another look at allowing that five-story condo to go on the meadow side, far away from the woods to give the wetland its natural overflow. Insist on enforcing, uh, setback regulations to avoid inevitable basement flooding, which is going to happen, and if you go in within, in that 30 meters, and don't sign off allowing cash in lieu of parkland, assist, uh, fewer units to keep some of that schoolyard as a place for kids to play. This property wasn't, that this property wasn't severed for saving by now is tragic. That the district school board in Niagara didn't see to it that this nat, natural resource wasn't automatically saved is inexcusable. Niagara Parks Commission was interested in a partial purchase in 1999 because of sites historical ties to the Battle of Chippewa and the War of 1812.
We're not going to focus on the past of what could have happened in the Parks Commission.
Okay, I'm gonna say, um, all I'm, all I'm gonna say is that people died, buried there because of invader. We got an invader this time, a developer within, but it doesn't have to be a fight.
Okay.
It's simply a great idea taken too far. Uh, people I trust have found him to be a, some, uh, someone who is smart, approachable, and has no problem being corrected when he does something wrong. This is wrong. I believe he knows it. It's a trial balloon with gaping holes. You cannot let it fly, because it's going to come back at you from, through the OMB. It's a very simple thing. Uh, enter into some peace talks, make this a win-win-win, smart growth project worthy of the name Legends.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hrlavich, were there anything specific that you wanted to address that, uh, that Ms. Manson had mentioned, uh, whether it be, uh, NPCA, PSW, any of those comments that were referenced?
Uh, perhaps, uh, I had a chance while the speaker was, uh, making her comments to look back at what the, oops, Bill, can you bring that back up, please? The, um, um, chance to look at what the Conservation Authority was saying, and it goes to the alderman's, uh, question about recommended and, uh, and, um, requires. And so the requires was for the PSW lands, which were, just to, put forward a bit. So the, uh, the PSW lands, and, and I'm getting to the speaker's point. So these are PSW, these, this is provincially significant. This is designated environmental protection in the city's official plan. Developer said he would zone these as environmental protection. He has said he would also zone the 10-meter buffer, which I said was about halfway between the edge of the woodlot and the back of the townhouses. Um, the Conservation Authority is asking for 30 meters, so that would take you somewhere into the middle of those, uh, townhouses along that edge, to give you some idea. So the Conservation Authority is saying the whole 30 meters. The recommended part, so they're requiring that be zoned, environmental protection, then they're recommending this woodlot. So the last speaker was men, mentioned the woodlot. So this area here, these townhouses, this apartment, that's part of this woodland area. That's recognized in the region's official plan as a wooded area, uh, and an environmental conservation area. So the, because it's regionally significant as opposed to provincially significant, that is the reason the Conservation Authority said recommend, or require and recommend. Uh, so then the speaker was speaking to this wooded area, and this is the treat area that she was referring to as being cut, uh, to provide for those, uh, houses. Um, I do, you know, see the consultant that provided that EIS in the audience, and if the developer wishes for her to speak, she probably could, uh, got some other, uh, questions of council.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Hrlavich. Uh, do we have anyone else other than the speaker? Yes, you can come forward, Jean, to the microphone, please. And again, for the public record, if you could state your name and address, please.
My name is Jean Grandoni, and I live at Route Number One, Garner Road, Niagara Falls.
Thank you.
I have just a short paragraph letter here, and my printer ran out of ink, so I'll start with Alex, and then, uh, I only have five other sheets I can put, so. There's, I'll put a couple on, just, I think, a couple on there. Thank you. Do you have the EIS in your, in your screen up here? Okay. Mr. Chairman, members of council, my concerns lie with, um, figure... Figure one, which is about page two in the EIS. Figure one, which is about page two in the E I S. I don't know if the council has that in there.
We don't have it, now, uh, Mr. Hrlavich?
Sorry, worship, the, uh, the schedule that Ms. Grandoni is speaking to and the last speaker spoke to our figures in the E I S pose our in council's package.
I guess maybe I should have copied this, but the colored ink was running out too. Um, the forest interior is my concern here and the extent of the development towards that from Edgeworth Road to the interior. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Hrlavich, but this red area here is all according, whether it's in or outside the development area is all forest interior? This red part here?
Yeah, worship, I don't feel that I can speak to the consultant's map.
Oh, that's consultant's map, I see, okay.
Okay, well, I'm a late person, I can, I would like to speak to it.
Mrs. Grandoni is referring to this wooded area here, so this is the P S W, this is the wooded area here.
Yeah, and part of it.
Thank you.
Part of it extends into the area to be preserved, but the larger part of it is outside of the preservation area and looks like it's being left for an area of future development. It appears from figure one on page two of the developer's E I S that the larger part of the area designated as forest interior is to be developed. Yet in several statements in the study, much importance is given to the forest interior designation for such characteristics as habitat for certain species and for certain forest classes such as significant forest. Why then is this area sketched in red on figure one of page two of the E I S omitted for protection? The larger part of it is. The forest interior designation should all be saved and in my opinion, the remainder of the forest protected right to the Edgeworth, Edgeworth Road. So I, I guess I'm in agreement with the former speaker about the extent of this development.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else here other than, yes, if you can come forward, sure. And Mr. Four, I know you submitted a letter as well that's in our packages.
Yes, so I'm Frank Four, five seven oh one, McPherson Crescent in Niagara Falls. So I just wanted to, uh, reference my letter and just mention that my understanding is another letter came from another member of the Park and City Committee. Um, and I don't see it referenced here from Curtis Thompson. Uh, he's, he sent it to planning via, um, through Jeff Goroski from the Park and City Committee.
Have you seen it, your worship?
Uh, I know he sent that on Friday and my understanding was it was supposed to come as well. So I'm just going to briefly reference both of those letters, the one that came from me and the one that came from Curtis. Uh, so in my letter, I expressed some concern about the buffers and about that area of forest in the north side. Again, uh, was, as was mentioned by a previous speaker, if you talk about the thirty meters, then it compromises the ability to develop that particular piece of property. In my letter also, what I was trying to refer to is the fact that one of the reasons for the recommendation for preserving that interior forest is because it is interior forest. And that's why they, they wanted it as a conservation area, because it's interior forest which, uh, certain species use and other species, uh, only can live in interior forest. This particular forest area extends into the Legends property, which is why it's so significant. It's actually larger than the part that you see here because it's also on the Legends property. So by reducing the size of the woodlot by developing that northern edge, you actually decreased then the size of the interior forest. So, uh, those were my concerns and I just wanted to reference that because I noticed Curtis's letter wasn't here and he expressed concerns about, um, about the, about the buffer. And he commented on the, the idea that, um, uh, by building a berm, which is I think one of the ways they wanted to address, uh, a smaller buffer, uh, he brought up the, the whole issue of how a berm introduces foreign soil and as a result, uh, leads to, um, invasive species, which then potentially could invade the wetland. So that was some of the things that he had expressed in his letter.
Okay, yeah, and hopefully we'll, we'll find where that letter ended up.
Yeah. So it was sent, I understand, by email, uh, from Jeff.
Jeff Goroski to the Reckon Culture Department. Okay, we'll have to look into that.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thanks, Frank. Do we have anyone else other than the developer who wishes to address counsel? Okay, seeing none, council will now hear from the applicant or his or her representative.
Good evening, my name is Jennifer Vita from Upper Canada Consultants and I'm the agent here on behalf of eight hundred four sixty. Um, I'd just like to thank staff for all their hard work in getting this file organized and in front of you this evening. Um, we have read and are happy with the recommendations in the report before you. And as staff has noted, this meeting is in relation to a zoning bylaw amendment for the property at eighty nine sixty Willoughby Road in Chippewa, the old F J Rutland Public School property. The zoning application proposes to rezone the subject lands from the current rural zoning to a residential group, multiple dwellings and environmental protection. The intention of the proposal is to develop, there is no intention in the proposal to develop the P S W as identified by the ministry. Um, the interior forest will be maintained through the, maintained and protected through the environmental protection zoning that is proposed. And the purpose of the rezoning is to permit the lands to be developed for the one hundred and four condominium townhouse dwellings and the fifty-two apartment dwellings in a five-story apartment building facing the golf course and to protect the environmental sensitive area. There are a number of site-specific provisions being requested in order to address the irregular shape of the property and the site-specific development plan. The application is consistent with the provincial policies and conforms to the local policies and is considered good land use planning as the plan will make efficient use of existing urban land. As you know, we recently received the M P C A comments. We haven't had a chance to address them, we do intend to address them, but we would hope that council would move forward with the report as recommended. Um, whether that be conditional through, um, addressing the M P C A comments. Unfortunately, we just haven't had time to address them before we are here, you, here this evening. We have asked M P C A to provide comments for quite some time. They've had the application for about four months and we're getting the, the comments the Friday before we're here before you. But as Mr. Hrlavich mentioned, there are a number of developments that have been approved within the city that have ten-meter setbacks from P S Ws that are very similar to this. Some of the examples include Fernwood, Warren Woods Development, Boys and Girls Club, German Village. So there's many examples and what we're proposing is not irregular from what's already been approved in the city.
Thank you very much, uh, yes, Counsel Ryanone?
Just based on that through you to Mr. Hrlavich, even if you'd have had the, the letter from the M P C A, would you still be recommending it with the ten-meter setback? Your recommendation would be as stands.
Your worship, we, our hope would have been that we would have received these comments a couple of weeks ago and the developer's agent could have then supplied the Conservation Authority with the information they needed so that we wouldn't be at this point of not having a certainty as to whether or not they could satisfy a no impact. That's what they need to do, satisfy no impact.
Do you have other questions of counsel for, for Jenfert? Do we have anyone here or any other questions you wanted to ask? All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, if there are no further questions or comments, yes, council, no? The public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded. Yes, Counsel Ryanone?
I would move staff recommendations with the follow-up that they thought that they, as, Mr., what's her name?
Jennifer.
Jennifer said they were going to contact and deal with the M P C A letter now because of the late notice that had come in. But I would move the recommendation as it is before us.
Okay, do we have a second for that? Uh, by Counsel Carrio? So, so moving the rec, moving the report, the recommendation for the report as it is, uh, subject to consultation with the M P C A's comments in their letter? Do I have that right?
She said they were going to discuss it with the M P C A.
Okay, after the fact, meaning they'll, we're going to prove it.
Yeah.
Yes, Monsieur Beeman?
The mechanism that we recommend to, to implement what council just asked for, is what's called a conditional zoning bylaw. There's a, there's a mechanism in the Planning Act that sets things up that way. So we can be conditional upon successfully navigating the M P C A or, uh, or control regime. That being said, because it's achieving, by law, it's achieving the same results that was just proposed and that way you've got a legal mechanism to do it.
Okay, Counsel Ryanone?
And I don't have a problem phrasing with that, phrasing it like that if in fact, as, as it said, we, it's a recommendation, it's not a requirement for us. So that we pass this recommendation that's before us and they consult with the M P C after, but it does not stall the development. Is that what you're talking about, Mr. Beeman?
The, um.
Because again, the M P C is a, is a recommendation.
You just want them to consult if you want to go ahead with the zoning, if you just pass a zoning bylaw, tell them you can go off a caution because you can't actually make them do that. A conditional zoning would require actual some with the, uh, with the M P C A for the project, if you go ahead.
Then they should get their stuff into us on time, I move the recommendation as it stands.
Okay, we have a motion by Counsel Ryanone and seconded by Counsel Carrio that we approve the recommendation. Yeah, I think that's ridiculous, it would take four months to get the letter in, the la, the eleventh hour, it's, yeah. Well, I'll be, I'll be forwarding this and we'll find out why and what happened, um, to the M P C A. So we've got the motion seconded, do we have any discussion? Then we'll call the vote, all those in favor? Okay, Counsel Crater? Opposed, okay, so that's with one opposed. Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Acting Clerk, could you please introduce the next item on the agenda?
A public meeting in accordance with section seventeen of the Planning Act and Ontario Regulation five four three slash zero six is now being convened to consider adoption of the Lundys Lane Community Improvement Plan. Notice was given through the publication of an advertisement in the Niagara Falls Review on Saturday, February third, two thousand and eighteen and by first-class mail to various agencies on Friday, February second, two thousand and eighteen. Anyone who wants notice of the adoption of the Lundys Lane Community Improvement Plan shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside council chambers.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. To outline the amendment, I'm going to call upon our Director of Planning and Development and Mr. Stephen Gammon of W S P to make a presentation. Mr. Gammon will begin the presentation to be followed directly by Mr. Hrlavich upon conclusion of the planner's comments. Okay, so Mr. Gammon? Welcome.
Thank you very much, your worship, Mayor Diodati and council. Um, today's statutory public meeting represents the culmination of the study for a community, community improvement plan for Lundys Lane. Uh, just to briefly outline the presentation, going to talk very briefly what the purpose of the project is. Uh, the study process, timeframe, identify some key elements of the consultation program, speak about the community improvement project area and show that to council, uh, talk about a few of the administrative items relevant to the plan and then give an overview of what the contents of the plan actually are. The purpose of the project was to prepare a community improvement plan for Lundys Lane.
Could you just hold one second, we've got a question from Counsel Thompson.
Are you speaking to this?
Yes.
Also? Um, you know, all I've had was phone calls all day about this C I P plan for Lundys Lane, that they've been working on it for two years and, uh, at the last minute, they haven't approved it, it hasn't been given back to the people at Lundys Lane. And the dollars involved compared to the other C I Ps are drastically reduced. They're very upset that they have not been treated like everybody else and consistent, uh, with the other C I Ps. Um, is, before we go all through this, can we have some discussion about, uh, the fairness of this? Are you, are you going to speak after or?
Yeah, we can get Mr. Jovanovic to talk afterwards, counselor.
All right.
Yeah, yeah, carry on, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, as council is most likely aware, there's been a shift in tourism preferences and that has impacted Lundys Lane. Um, the study for a community improvement plan for Lundys Lane was to look at this transition that's happening along Lundys Lane, chart a course that will support the revitalization of the tourism commercial uses and strengthen the integration of the Lundys Lane corridor with the surrounding community. Uh, to that end, we undertook a SWOT analysis report to identify and understand the existing context of Lundys Lane. We prepared a land use plan and report to describe beneficial planning policy framework changes to support transition. Uh, we developed a vision statement for Lundys Lane, described a municipal leadership strategy to improve the public realm, created urban design guidelines specific to Lundys Lane to guide implementation both for staff and potential applicants and we custom tailored financial incentives to encourage investment in private property. Uh, as mentioned, this study has been going on for a few years uh, and as I noted, we're at the statutory public meeting, which is typically the culmination of this process. Uh, the outline here indicates we've had multiple touchpoints, uh, public open houses and information centers uh, and other forms of communication with key stakeholders. Uh, of those, the key consultation events included, uh, public open house number one, where we had a hands-on SWOT analysis with members of the public and key stakeholders, where our consultant team worked one-on-one with some larger aerial maps to identify very specifically where there were issues, where there were opportunities, strengths and weaknesses. Um, public open house number two was to present the findings of the SWOT analysis back to the public and to key stakeholders and reiterate the, or sorry, present the draft or preliminary vision for Lundys Lane. Open house number three was to present the draft community improvement plan and urban design guidelines. And lastly, on an ongoing basis, we worked with the Technical Advisory Committee that consisted of city and region staff as well as key stakeholders such as the Lundys Lane Business Improvement Association, excuse me. The proposed community improvement project area is now illustrated on screen here. It extends in the west from just shy of the rail crossing of Lundys Lane, which is west of Garner Road, to Drummond in the east. Um, and for council's benefit, the properties included are all the properties that have frontage along Lundys Lane to their full depth, except for a few small exceptions where there were, say, ancillary parking lots associated with commercial businesses that didn't front on Lundys Lane or in the case of one or two properties that are extremely deep and to include the full extent of the property would get away from Lundys Lane, the corridor and that, uh, public realm that ultimately we want to see the benefit of improvement upon. Uh, the administrative items that I mentioned, um, the approach here is similar to the implementation of, uh, community improvement plans in, in Niagara Falls today. Uh, we are recommending the designation of a, a day-to-day administrator, which would be a city staff member. They would meet with the potential applicants under the, under the plan. They would manage the application acceptance and review, manage financial incentive agreements and the processes related to those and they would implement the monitoring and valuation strategy that would help track, uh, the success of this community improvement plan and provide input to council for making decisions in the future. Uh, council's responsibility is consistent with how council operates today with the other community improvement plans. Council would review and approve applications, uh, establish annual funding for the financial incentives and review and approve prioritized projects to implement any improvements in the public realm that are, uh, associated with municipal leadership strategy or related thereto. In terms of an overview of the key elements, so as already mentioned, uh, we developed divisions for Lundys Lane, which I'll present to you. Uh, there's a municipal leadership strategy that defines approaches to improving the public realm. There are the urban design guidelines that are specific. There are the urban design guidelines that are specific to Lundys Lane that will guide implementation, and then, of course, the financial incentives that are designed to encourage private investment in private property along the corridor. Now, I recognize this is not terribly clear on screen, but the vision for Lundys Lane is that Lundys Lane in the future will be a vibrant, attractive, mixed-use corridor. It will be a key destination for visitors, a complete neighborhood, and a major commercial and cultural destination for city residents. Lundys Lane is celebrative of its unique and long history through vibrant businesses, interesting public spaces, and interactive educational opportunities. This vision is based on several key elements. Those include making improvements to both the land use and connectivity of the community, enhancing the public realm, providing new public spaces, capitalizing on the existing history of the area, the heritage of the area and those assets, and improving gateways, entry points, and wayfinding along Lundys Lane. Speaking specifically to the municipal leadership strategy, the intent of the municipal leadership strategy is to complement the grant programs by identifying other actions and policies to support improvement of the public realm and advance other objectives along Lundys Lane. The key elements of that strategy are streetscape master plan implementation. The urban design guidelines, which I'll speak about in a moment, are designed to complement the already existing, and as I understand, approved streetscape master plan for Lundys Lane. Also, the implementation of the land use plan. Our land use plan recommends some official plan and zoning by law changes to better align the policy and zoning framework and to improve connections in the neighborhood and to existing neighborhoods that are adjacent to that. So really, we just want to make sure that framework supports revitalization and is consistent and makes it easy for applicants coming forward looking to enhance their properties or redevelop, that they have a clear framework to work within. The wayfinding signage and gateway strategy. The intent here is to improve the visibility of Lundys Lane, help visitors navigate along Lundys Lane, and find the destinations that are looking for, the attractions that people may not know, given the length of the corridor and the overwhelming number of things to see and do in Niagara Falls in general. Another key element is preserving and highlighting heritage along Lundys Lane. There are two designated buildings existing along Lundys Lane, and what we want to do is use those as well as a variety of other initiatives such as new public space park at adjacent to the OPG Canal that could be used as a focal point and could help convey, say, the history of power generation in Niagara Falls, promote adaptive reuse of designated buildings along the corridor. One is a former schoolhouse that would love to see used by some sort of community group or by a business that can highlight the architecture and the history of that building. Celebrate the history of automobile tourism. While times have changed, there is a nostalgia associated with the kind of golden years of travel. My own parents honeymooned in Niagara Falls. That used to be a well-understood tradition. There's still nostalgia for that. Introduce public education opportunities. We know Lundys Lane used to be a First Nations trail. There's the history of auto-tourism I just mentioned, the history of the development of the QEW and its impact on Niagara Falls. And then there's an idea to host other thematic events tied into the heritage and highlighting Lundys Lane along the corridor. The last two elements of the municipal leadership strategy are to consider design awards. They don't need to be specific to Lundys Lane, but what we want to do is highlight improvements made on the corridor by recognizing the standout improvements and making sure that they get publicized both locally, regionally, to help people recognize that there's change occurring and there's things to see and do along Lundys Lane that are new and exciting. And lastly, the other element of municipal leadership strategy is that at the time of the development charges by law review, we would suggest that council consider potentially exempting properties along Lundys Lane within the community improvement project area from development charges to provide an additional incentive for people to consider redevelopment of their property or improvement to an extent that improves the vitality of Lundys Lane. Now, the Urban Design Guidelines is a large document. As I said, it complements the streetscape master plan. And to give a real snapshot of what's in that document is a little bit challenging. But maybe I'll speak more to what is it meant to do. And listed on the screen are a number of the different elements, sections from the document, which really show that it looks at the different elements of site planning, building location, parking, green space, pedestrian connectivity, all these elements that make a good site and provide a nice relationship to the public realm. But the intent of the Urban Design Guidelines is as a tool for both applicants and staff to use when they are designing their sites and reviewing those development applications. And they're intended to ensure that any approved developments are consistent with the vision for Lundys Lane. The guidelines are not intended to stifle creativity, but they're meant to show some best practices and give individual applicants who understand their existing sites and their site context opportunities to achieve a higher level of urban design. And we also want to encourage a beneficial relationship with the public realm that will continue to evolve Lundys Lane in a positive direction, a more integrated community, more pedestrian-friendly, yet still being supportive of tourism commercial uses and the traveling public. Then with regard to the financial incentives, there are three financial incentive programs proposed. They provide a suite of tools to address a variety of issues and contextual changes and as they emerge throughout the life of the CIP. So they are designed that they can be implemented today, but as the lane changes over time, they will still remain relevant. Council may choose to fund one, all or none of these programs. And as I mentioned, in terms of the administrative processes, there is a monitoring and valuation strategy, and the intent of that is to report back to council on the success and use of these programs so that council can make a decision if they want to change the funding for those programs depending on its success. Lastly, as already noted, consistency with the Lundys Lane Urban Design Guidelines is a key principle because that's one of the main ways of achieving the vision in terms of having the vibrant community that we're looking for to reestablish itself along Lundys Lane. And lastly, just to conclude my portion of the presentation, I'll just speak to the three programs briefly. The first program is the Commercial Facade, Landscaping, and Property Improvement Grant. The intent of this program is to promote aesthetic improvements to those existing buildings and/or properties which are desirable to be maintained and improved over the long term and which represent a positive contribution to the streetscape. The ideal here is that we would want one application to cover these three key elements, the facade, the landscaping of the site, and any other property improvements that are required so that an applicant coming forward is making the most beneficial change in one application at one time. There's the Adaptive Reuse and Motel Revitalization Grant. The intent of this program is to assist in the conversion of existing vacant space or an existing use into a new commercially used, commercial use, and to assist in the conversion of upper-story vacant or commercial space into residential uses. There are obviously a number of existing motels along Lundys Lane. While people's travel patterns and tourism preferences have changed, there's nothing that doesn't say that those motels won't become viable again. As people look at things like boutique hotels and more unique experiences when they travel, there's an opportunity that people could reinvest in these motels, create more strongly themed attractions to bring people in who think that would be a different approach than, say, going to one of the typical hotels. So this program helps kind of inspire that creativity and find ways to reuse, underutilize spaces that are existing today and keep them supporting the other activity on Lundys Lane. And lastly, the Tax Increment-Based Grant. The intent of this is to promote major property improvements that will result in an increase in the assessed value of the property. The program focuses on incenting mixed-use multi-story infill and redevelopment. The top two programs, Programs 1 and 2, can be used in combination. They are more looking at, the first one is more tied to the aesthetics and function of the exterior of the site. The second program is really more about the building and the assets on the property, making sure that those meet building code, fire code. So you can combine those two. The third program is a standalone tax increment-based grant because you're typically talking about a scale development where the amount of change you're making would far exceed the benefit you'd get from the first two programs. And because that applicant is putting more of an investment in this program, basically doesn't draw on the other two, but provides the tax increment-based grant to basically grant back some of the improvement in the assessed value so that they've put the investment in and now they see that back by basically getting a grant back on their taxes over a set timeframe consistent with the other CIPs in the city. That concludes my portion. If I could pass now to Mister Hrlavich.
Mister Hrlavich?
Thank you. Just waiting for a second for the expert to bring up the balance of this. So planning staff worked with Mister Gammon and his firm to produce this CIP and working with the Lundys Lane Business Association. I just heard the three programs that consultants recommended. And so planning, basically, reviewed these programs in order to align them with other funding programs that we have within the municipality. So the first incentive is that commercial facade, which the last speaker mentioned, was more designed for aesthetics. So it has to be commercial. It also applies to landscaping of the property. So the idea that we have a brand-new streetscape master plan that's been developed for Lundys Lane, that we would incentivize the property owners to make improvements on their property as well, so that they would be enhancing their site with trees and green space. And so the program is developed then for improving the facade and the landscaping and basically improving the area next to the public realm. And this would be for commercial and mixed-use properties. The grant would be a maximum of $15,000. That could be split between $7,500 for the facade and $7,500 for the landscaping. We don't have a landscape anywhere else since we have the CIPs. Each CIP to the area. So then of that grant, that would be split between the city and the region for the facade. The region does not fund landscaping, so that portion of the grant would be entirely of the city's contribution. Under the Adaptive Reuse Program, this would be that conversion of motels to other types of commercial space, or conversion of second-floor motel rooms to apartments, that kind of thing. It would be bringing property up to standards with respect to HVAC, electrical, plumbing. We have a similar program in our other CIP areas, which we call Commercial Building Improvement. That program is a grant of $10,000 recommended for Lundys Lane. That's the same amount that we do for HVAC and so on in the Drummondville area. Again, that would be split between the city and region in terms of who actually pays. And then the last component is that tax increment. So this is when the owner makes improvements to the property, the taxes go up between what they were paying prior to improvements and what they're paying after the improvements. There is an agreement there with the city, and there's a sliding scale. So they get 80% rebate on the increased amount, sliding down to 20% over a 10-year period. That's similar to the same tax increment-based grants that we have in Drummondville and downtown. So downtown, we have $25,000 maximum for our property, which would be $10,000 for the facade, $10,000 for the improvements to roof windows, air conditioning, heating, electrical, and an additional $5,000 for heritage buildings. So a total of $25,000, the same $25,000 that's being recommended for Lundys Lane, but because the programs are different, there's a slightly different split. The tax increment-based program is exactly the same. The, in terms of the funding, the city and regional contribution is dependent, the region's contribution is dependent on the funding. We did actually see the Regional Planning Committee's recommendation that there'd be no new funding for new CIPs, so they would fund only existing CIPs. So that would affect the Lundys Lane CIP. Well, it wasn't part of our recommendation. It's just information that came to us today. It would be our recommendation to ensure council adopt this CIP, to also ask that the region, while endorsing this CIP program, also include Lundys Lane in their funding program since we've been working on this plan for more than a year. The, sorry, that's basically what the slide is saying. Therefore, our staff report is recommending that we receive any comments from the public. We don't actually have the bylaws for that, to adopt this CIP here tonight, so that we can receive those comments and receive any direction from council to make those modifications and bring it back to council for the March 27 meeting.
Thank you, Mister Hrlavich. Do we have any questions of council for Mister Hrlavich? Yeah, Counselor Carrillo?
Thank you, your worship. Sorry about my voice. But the incentives that you describe in this are the exactly the same or basically the same as we use downtown in Drummond and Main and Ferry, Mister Hrlavich?
Yeah, through your worship, the dollar amounts end up the same, $25,000 per property for commercial building and commercial facade, but they're split up slightly differently in this program.
Development charge relief, the same?
No, there isn't a development charge relief. There would be a development charge relief under the citywide program if it's a new attraction, if it's a, if it's a place of entertainment. But for motels, our program doesn't extend to new hotel rooms for DC relief.
But for all the other things that they could do on the conversions, the reuse, would they get development charge relief on those things?
Not commercial uses.
Not commercial uses.
They're intended to incentivize areas of the city outside of the tourist core with new attractions, trying to get people to stay longer. So, as I say, museums, and the places of entertainment, attractions, those are all eligible. But commercial use, so retail stores would not be eligible under that grant program. It's a separate grant program already in existence. So that's where they would get their DC reuse.
Exemption? And is that the same as we do downtown?
Downtown's slightly different because it's in a regionally identified DC-exempt area, and so they are exempt for any commercial use. So that would include retail stores.
The other question I have was, the money that you have that we're talking about if we invest, or we put up so much money each year to invest in the program, so you've got it coming from the operating budget.
That's correct.
Could it not come from the other money? Because it is economic development. So why would we not take it from the OLG money? I know everybody wants from the OLG money, but it's economic development. And we talked earlier, or the council talked earlier, about taking money from that for economic development. Wouldn't this be for economic development? Would that money not be the same, not be the same idea? Take the money from OLG because this is a project that is economic development.
Well, that's going to be council's decision when they get around to looking at the OLG money. We had $65,000 that council approved in the Lundys Lane CIP budget last year. We thought that this CIP would have been approved last year, so we put $65,000 in 2017 account. Council approved that as part of their operating budget. We've allocated $65,000 again this year. That's the same amount that we give to Drummondville. Downtown's slightly different. We're working off of a...
I can make that argument at the budget meeting.
Sure.
Yep, thank you. Counselor P. Ray?
Yeah, your worship, just on the point of what's different between the downtown CIPs and the Main Street CIPs, I think the one aspect that was left out was in regards to the loan programs because the CIP, I don't believe, has any type of loan program. Whereas the other CIPs had a loan program, maybe through you to Mister Hrlavich. He can elaborate on that.
Mister Hrlavich, can you elaborate on that?
There is a loan program for residential development downtown. So $20,000 per unit to convert upper floors to residential units. It's a loan, so it's paid back. It's not a grant. It is interest-free during the period of the life of that loan, but it is repayable payment. I guess that's obviously why it's a loan.
Also on Main Street.
Yes, and also on Main Street. And I think downtown has a... And I think downtown has a loan program for HVAC and other services, electrical and so on. So, there's a loan, loan program downtown. Each CIP area is slightly different, so there are some loans, yes.
And there's no loans for this one? Yeah. And the status of loans for Lundy's Lane, is there any loans proposed for this? Mr. Hurlovich?
There were none proposed for this, through the CIP.
Okay. So, another question's right now. Okay, so now, for the public, David, we'll get you up here next. Members of the public are advised that the Ontario Municipal Board may dismiss all or part of any appeal filed regarding the Lundy's Lane Community Improvement Plan, the CIP, if the party has not made an oral or writ submission at this public meeting. Council will hear from anyone who wishes to speak to the proposed community improvement plan. So, this will be your opportunity, Mr. Jovanovic, and anyone else? Is there anyone else here other than Mr. Jovanovic that wants to speak to this plan for the Lundy's Lane plan? Okay, Mr. Jovanovic?
Thank you very much. Your worship, members of council, my name is David Jovanovic, and I am the project administrator for the Lundy's Lane BIA. On behalf of Tish Bologna, the Chair of the Lundy's Lane BIA, I would like to pass on her regrets on not being able to be present this evening due to a longstanding obligation that she could not reschedule. Before commencing with our presentation on behalf of the BIA, the Lundy's Lane BIA would like to thank Steve Gannon of Marshall Macklin-Monahan Group and city staff members Alex Hurlovich and John Barnesley, who was not here this evening, for their hard work and determination to bring forward this very worthwhile environmental plan. With the burgeoning development of new neighborhoods in the west end of Niagara Falls, Lundy's Lane must continue to adapt to new challenges and opportunities that this growth brings with it. Lundy's Lane is no longer just a thoroughfare to get through Niagara Falls, it is now home to tens of thousands of residents, a major place of employment, commerce, dining, and entertainment. Now, this is becoming Niagara's neighborhood. This unprecedented growth requires, required the Lundy's Lane BIA, City of Niagara Falls, and Region of Niagara to comprehensively revisit the functionality and vision of Lundy's Lane. Through the guidelines of the Marshall Macklin-Monahan Group, the Lundy's Lane CIP that is before council tonight addresses these issues and lays out a template and vision for how the future hub of Niagara Falls will look and evolve. The CIP addresses land use connectivity improvements, inclusion of more residential uses as part of mixed-use commercial uses, intensification along the West Lane, and improved multimodal connectivity for greater integration of the existing residential neighborhoods. The CIP supports the Lundy's Lane Streetscape Master Plan that commences this spring, and thanks to Mr. Holman and his apartment on bringing forward some great plans, and council for supporting it. We will be embarking on street replanting, light standard upgrades, lighting upgrades, street furniture, additional banners, new planted road medians, public art, interpretive heritage elements, and wayfinding signage. The CIP confirms also the need for new public space. That will include development of the planned OPG Canal Park and enhancement of the associated trailheads of the Millennium and Gary Handershop Trails, new parquettes and public plazas and other public and semi-public spaces associated with the future development opportunities. The success of a CIP is not just about the vision. As quoted in the CIP document that was presented earlier, "The key purpose of a CIP is to encourage the beautification, rehabilitation, and other improvements of the building stock and privately-owned land in the CIP zone." The Lundy's Lane CIP offers four financial incentive programs, which were presented earlier. These programs, grants, are aimed at addressing the critical needs of the community and to help promote vital private property investment across the entire Lundy's Lane corridor. As presented this evening, these programs or grants include the Commercial Facade, Landscaping and Property Improvement Grant, the Adaptive Reuse and Motel Revitalization Grants, as well as the Tax Increment Base Grant. As shown in your handout in Appendix A, which was presented to council on the 25th of April 2017, titled Downtown CIP and Historical Drummondville CIP Reviews, these programs have been very successful in stimulating revitalization, economic growth, and private sector investment. Between the two CIPs, 159 applications, which include non-eligible works, were submitted, of which 131 have been completed, generating $6.8 million in private sector investment. With over 260 businesses in commercial, and a commercial assessment of $217 million on Lundy's Lane, Lundy's Lane is 3.64 times larger than the combined assessment of downtown and Main and Ferry BIAs. The potential for Lundy's Lane is significantly greater. We have a real opportunity here to bring in significant private sector investment into Lundy's Lane. In order to make our collective vision for Lundy's Lane to become the hub of the new Niagara, the Lundy's Lane BIA requests that council adopt the revisions, reinstatements, and additions of the financial incentive programs as they're outlined in the handout. These are numbers that were present in every draft copy up until the final addition. The changes that would be reflected in the creation of the bylaws governing the Lundy's Lane CIP are that 3.2.1 Commercial Facade and Building Improvement Grant is returned to a minimum of base amount of $5,000, additional $500 per linear meter, to a maximum of $20,000, or 50% of eligible cost, whichever is less. That the proposed 10-meter setback be extended to 30 meters, so that more than 16.5 of our businesses, percent of our businesses can apply for the much-needed incentives. The way the CIP is worded currently, 83.5% of our businesses would not be able to qualify or file for a CIP facade improvement. Next, that 3.2.1 Landscape and Other Property Improvement Grants is returned to a minimum of base of $5,000, additional $250 per linear meter, to a maximum of $20,000, or 50% of eligible costs. That allowable costs include professional landscaping and not exclude sod, shrubs, and other landscape features, as was presented in all previous drafts. That 3.2.2, the Adaptive Reuse and Motel Revitalization Grant, is returned to a minimum of $10,000 per unit, per slash motel room, or to a maximum of $30,000, as was in the previous drafts. That the 2018 Lundy's Lane BIA CIP budget be established at a minimum of $150,000 to allow for the strong demand for uptake in year one. This amount more accurately reflects a larger number of businesses on Lundy's Lane, the greater frontage, and with the facade, and that the number of applications not be capped in year one. And referring back to Appendix A, you can see that in downtown and in Drummondville, downtown alone, in year one, there was a $440,000 uptake in grants that were made available. And between Drummondville, for Drummondville, the first two years, there's $115,000. $65,000 is not a realistic amount for the size of Lundy's Lane and the potential that we have and the number of businesses that we have. That 3.2.3, the Tax Increment Base Grant, maximum eligible costs, be returned to, and this is a very valuable mechanism for bringing in private-level funding, be returned to 100% for redevelopment of an existing building or infill of an existing vacant lot resulting in a new mixed-use building, and that the eligible costs be returned to 100% for conversion of an existing building to another use in accordance with the eligible works. This is consistent with all previous drafts. The development charges exemption to Lundy's Lane be established, to equal the 75% exemption from development charges on residential, commercial, mixed-use development, as was afforded to both the downtown and Drummondville CIPs. That the Region of Niagara also be approached to offer the same 75% exemption on their development charges portion. And also, that consideration be given for the Lundy's Lane CIP to have provisions for planning application fee waiver, permit fee rebate for building demolition and occupancy permits, study grants to reimburse costs of studies required by the city, such as urban design, traffic impact, environmental servicing, archaeological, economic feasibility, and geotechnical. The Lundy's Lane BIA would like to thank council for your support and your vision over the years, and we request that council supports the Lundy's Lane CIP with the financial revision as presented in your attachments. As well as, we'd like to thank you for your continued support of the Lundy's Lane Streetscaping Master Plan. Collectively, these programs will significantly benefit the public realm, allow businesses to prosper, and provide the residents with, of the west end, a progressive neighborhood that we can all be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions of council for Mr. Jovanovic? None? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else, other than, anyone else wants to speak to the CIP, the Lundy's Lane CIP, that's before us? Yep. I'm going to close this out. Did you want me to close it out?
Yeah.
Did you bring motion?
I'm looking for...
Yep.
I'm looking for some kind of direction, you know, it's not coming back till the 27th of March, and we have...
The bylaw.
The bylaw, yes. But in the interim, can, can we get the Lundy's Lane people and the staff together to see if there can be some adjustment and modification, as being suggested by, by Mr. Jovanovic? Because these figures were not given to them. They were surprised when they got the information, just in the last day or so, last couple of days, and that they would like to maximize the impact on Lundy's Lane and see if there could be an opportunity to adjust some of these to be more in line with the other CIPs, particularly the loan aspect completely gone, the distances, which cut out 80-some-odd properties. I think there should be some discussion and dialogue to see if we can support them in what they're attempting to do. That's what I'm looking for.
Okay, well, I, why don't we, we'll get the question, and we'll ask Mr. Hurlovich to comment, so he'll hear the kind of feeling of council. So, I've got Council Peter Angelo and then Carrio.
Okay, thank you. Did you want to close the meeting?
Yeah, well, did you want, and then we'll take direction?
Sure.
So, there's no specific questions? Why don't we do that then? So, the public meeting with respect to the amendment to the Lundy's Lane Community Improvement Plan, CIP, is now concluded. Council Peter Angelo and then Carrio?
Thanks, your worship. I guess the first thing that I want to say is just, thank you to staff for bringing this document back, as I had asked back in December for a date to get the Lundy's Lane CIP kind of at a public meeting. Here we are today at a public meeting, and I personally, I don't want to send it back to staff for more meetings. I think decisions are going to end up being made here at council. I know myself personally, I'm comfortable with what's been presented. I think that that, those are the figures that were talked about in the, in the draft CIP. And I think whatever council decides that they're going to do, they have to make it meaningful if it's, if it's going to elicit, I guess, private investment. And that's really what we want. We want the CIP to act as a catalyst, so that the private business owners are going to invest in their own properties. And then, it, it's, it's an investment for the city as well, your worship. We're going to see our return in tax dollars. So, I think we have to do something that's meaningful. Again, I'm comfortable with the figures that are here. If you're looking for a motion when the time comes, I'll be happy to approve that this is what we put in the bylaw that will end up getting passed on March 27th, your worship.
Thank you. Council Carrio?
I just ask Council Peter Angelo, what figures? Is he talking about the paper that David Jovanovic?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, and the comments were going to be based along what Council Thompson had said about sending it back to staff, but I think, I'd like to see us give staff the direction, not have more meetings. Give, give the staff the direction. I have a hard time explaining to the people on Lundy's Lane why their CIP would be any different than the one downtown, or Main and Ferry, or Drummondville. I'd like to see it mirrored, so that the CIP in Niagara Falls is a CIP, and it's the same no matter what area of town you're in. I'd also like to see the money that we decide to allocate come out of the OLG money, not the operating budget. Is, I have a hard time explaining to some businesses why they would, we would be taking their tax dollars and investing it in another area to compete with businesses that are similar to theirs. If we take it out of the OLG money, not the operating money, we don't have to argue that with anyone. We can see it's economic development, taking it out of a fund that was given to us for economic development, not out of the operating budget that the other taxpayers are contributing to. So, I'd like to see those two things.
Thank you for that. Any other comments of council? Okay, Mr. Hurlovich, did you want to weigh in at all in the comments that we've had before we make the motion now? Okay, so, you want to make the motion, council?
Yeah, your worship. I'd be happy to move that the recommendation from staff, that we receive the comments that were made tonight at the statutory public meeting, and also that we have the adoption bylaws brought before council at the March 27th meeting, but that they include, your worship, the figures that were presented from the LLCIA.
Okay. That's seconded by Council Morocco. Do we have any discussion to that? Oh, and also, did you want to...
The money? Oh, yes, I'm sorry, your worship, absolutely.
And the, with the funds that would come out of the OLG fund, is that right? Right the motion? Yes, Mr. Hurlovich?
Does that include the loan aspect for the residential?
There is no loan aspect allowed for both in the draft, I believe.
There is in Main Street and there is in downtown.
I understand.
Yeah, give me one second, Mr. Hurlovich. Yes, Council Carrio?
Just a question on the loan aspect. Did we not have a discussion in this council chamber not that long ago, that we had all that money set aside in a loan budget, and it was not being taken advantage of? And we took some of that money and put it into the grant budget, because no one was using the loan? Is that correct, Mr. Hurlovich? That, that people were not accessing on the downtown and the other CIPs? We had set aside money for loans, but they were not being used. So, we set some of that money, took it out of the loan, put it into the grant, so that people seemed to want the grants, not the loans. It seems to me that we had that discussion on the downtown CIP.
Mr. Hurlovich?
There's just one pot of money for the downtown CIP. It came out of money that the city borrowed, you know, a dozen years ago, when they were going to be doing a big overhaul of the downtown. That money didn't get spent, so that's the money that's being used. That money didn't get spent, so that's the money that's being used. Whether that was to be for loans or some other purpose, I don't know. What we have done is because we haven't been using that at as fast a rate, that account has been used to offset parking revenues, it's been used to offset special events downtown, it's been used to offset a number of programs. So perhaps that's to the counselor's point. Yes, we have used that money for other purposes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. So we've got the motion moved by Councilor Peter Angelo, seconded by Councilor Carrio with the addition that it be included. Yes, Mr. Ilovich, you wanted, yeah, I've got you coming, council.
So sorry, to that motion, and I just wanted to make it clear, and that is that the region has taken a position, and you'll hear this at Regional Council this week on Thursday, that there will be no new regional money, no regional money for new CIPs as of 2018. So my suggestion would be that the city make a request in adopting a CIP that the region be asked to look at extending the Lundys Lane CIP to the funding program since we've been working on it for more than a year.
I'd be happy to include that in the motion, Your Worship.
Okay. So you've got that, Mr. Clerk? So we're going to grandfather that in, and it's perfect that we've got Regional Counselor Val Patty with us here today, too, so she can hear it directly from the horse's mouth and she can lead the charge as she always does. She's never shy at the region, I got to say. She's a big voice. So we've got that motion, Councilor Morocco.
No, I was just saying that I seconded. You said...
Oh, you seconded. I'm sorry. Okay. So moved by Councilor Peter Angelo, seconded by Councilor Morocco.
Do you want to follow where the cough comes from?
I know we need a lot of Lysol in this chamber afterward. So we've got the motion. Everyone understands it. I'm going to call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous. So thanks very much, our Lundys Lane friends, for being here today, and Councilor Val Patty will march forward with this at the region. Godspeed. So now we're going to bounce back in our agenda. Okay, so we're on the reports. First report. We're following the agenda right now, Mr. Becher. Yep. Okay. On the 2018-06 Monthly Tax Receivables Report, the, we're looking for council to receive the report for information purposes. Okay. Moved by Councilor Carrio, seconded by Councilor Morocco. All those in favor? That's approved. Thank you. Then on to municipal accounts, 2018-07. We are looking that council approve for the period January 16th through February the 19th. Moved by Councilor Thompson, seconded by Councilor Morocco. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved. Keep an eye on Quorum here, too?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Thank you. Report FS 2018-01, the firefighter line-of-duty death memorial.
Second.
Okay. It's moved by Councilor Morocco, seconded by Councilor Carrio. That this report be received and that council approve the use of on-duty staff and equipment in order to complete the excavation, cement, and electrical work. Councilor Carrio?
Can you just make a comment, Your Worship? If you read the report, it's also open to the public because we're going to be looking for some money for this memorial. So it's open for, we're looking for donations to cover the money, the fire department, the volunteers. We'll be looking for money to cover the portion of this memorial that's, that we don't have the money for.
Right. So that's not going to be funded by taxpayer money?
No, but they're going to be looking for money, and just to give them a little bit of a plug, it, you know, they're going to be looking for private donations to help to fund this because they don't have all the money right away, or today, and they're looking for private donations to help fund this. I think this is a fabulous memorial, and if you look at the pictures and everything, it's very well done. So hopefully that some of the local people will step forward and support it.
Okay. Then we'll call the vote on that. All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous. Thank you for that. MW 2018-02, the Fallsview Boulevard Transportation EA Status Report. Councilor Thompson?
Yes. I see in the report they're recommending that Buchanan Avenue be closed. Is that right, Mr. Holman? We had a public meeting with all of the BIA involved from Victoria Center probably a year more ago, and they all voted unanimously not to close Buchanan Avenue, and I told them about this in the last day or so, and they were shocked that, and you know, if you know that area at all, you come down, which I do every day, come down Fallsview Boulevard in the summertime, Stanley and Ferry is all clogged up with cars. You can slip around and get through the cars and go down Buchanan Avenue and relieve some of the congestion and get out of that area, and that's why the BIA voted not to close and put a city parking lot at the end of Buchanan Avenue there. When I, when they all saw this, they were shocked, and that's not what they were planning on doing. And there's a letter from the BIA here, from Eric McComb, the chairperson, doesn't say anything about approving this. All it says, "We'd like to continue on with the improvements of the BIA streetscaping in that particular area." But that was rejected by everybody there, and how do you come in and suggest that that be closed? I think that's a huge mistake personally.
Maybe we get some feedback from staff? Yes, Mr. Beaman?
Well, the closure of a road will require a further step, like the Councilor Thompson, before this could actually be implemented. This closure of a road requires a public, a special public procedure. So that would be, all I'm saying is, is that if there are concerns in that regard, we certainly have to follow that step most early before the actual closing of the road, before the closure by law could be passed.
I think this is dangerous and certainly against the BIA and what they would like to see happen there. Why would you close off a street that gets rid of some of the congestion in that particular area? I would move deferral and have it brought back on the March 27th meeting, and in the meantime, have a meeting with the BIA to get their input when they come back, either they're in favor or against. So I would move that.
Yeah. Okay. So we've got a motion by Councilor Thompson, seconded by Councilor Crater. You guys just come in the room right now. There's the Fallsview Boulevard Transportation Environmental Assessment where they're looking to close Buchanan from Ferry Street North, and the idea is that we bring this back in four weeks at our next meeting after we've had a chance to consult with BIA members to get their feelings on the idea and the rationale behind why it was proposed as well.
Because they all voted against it and opposed it.
Right. So we can get that and bring it back to us?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, Mr. Holman, before we vote on that?
Mr. Mayor, just to explain, the difference between what's there now and what was originally proposed, the opposition came from the property owner who owned the LCBO at the time. Their opposition was because the location of the existing building and an all, and a signalized intersection would physically block traffic from moving in and out of their, of their driveway off of Ferry Street. They sold the property. The new developer, Tanum Developments, and Mike Weber's here from the development company, have acquired the property, and they're proposing to expand the LCBO and relocate the building on the site so that proper access can be achieved from Ferry Street. So that's the difference between what the BIA had seen in the past and what they're supporting now, and you'll see as an attachment, there is a letter there. Of course, they're asking for the city to advance the streetscaping component on Ferry Street, and we will, of course, in, you know, in due course. But the key for us here, I think, is to finalize how this intersection's going to work. This intersection broke down because during peak traffic demands, because the left-hand, left-turn movement onto Buchanan, and it was an all-way stop. By signalizing it, you're going to be able to synchronize the single timings at this intersection and Stanley Avenue and Clark Avenue to allow for more of a free-flow movement of traffic through this area. So this is a huge advantage to the movement of traffic on Fallsview Boulevard, getting onto Ferry, turning left, and getting through that, as Councilor Thompson calls it, the difficult left-hand, right-hand turn. If you'd like to bring the BIA back and just confirm their position, I think that's fine. I know that the developer is anxious to proceed to construction later on this year, and they're kind of waiting for us to make a determination about how we're going to move ahead here.
Thank you, Mr. Holman. Yes, Councilor Thompson?
Yeah. Well, first of all, when the BIA speaks, they're the ones that you listen to in the area. Yes, we want to see a new building on the liquor board property. It'd be great. I saw some pictures of it. I don't have any problem with that, but you don't have a meeting with everybody in the BIA who are responsible for that jurisdiction. They all say no, and they agreed to signalize that intersection. They want a light there. They want to improve the traffic, but they didn't want to cut that Buchanan Avenue off. So at least what you should be doing is going back to them before you bring a report like that in and telling them what you're going to do and get their input. Maybe they have some other ideas, or maybe they feel at least that they're being listened to with respect to their jurisdiction. That's all I'm trying to do.
Fair enough. I've given lots of leeway with the motion for deferral, which isn't debatable, so everyone understands the argument behind it.
Sir, are you sure?
I think so. Okay, so we're, this is a motion for deferral to the March 27th meeting after a discussion meeting with the BIA.
Seconded?
Yeah, we had a seconded by Councilor Crater. Okay, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous. Thank you for that. Crawford Street, TS 2018-03. There is a recommendation that the existing parking prohibition on both sides of Crawford Street between Pettit and London Court be replaced with a stopping prohibition. We're looking for a motion to move, moved by Councilor Thompson, seconded by Councilor Morocco, that we move the recommendation of staff. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved. Thank you. TS 2018-04, agreement with the Boys and Girls Club for utilization of property for a transit bus turnaround on the property.
Just an agreement extension.
Yeah, it's just an agreement extension. Moved by Councilor Thompson, seconded by Councilor Crater. There's no discussion. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved. Thank you. TS 2018-05, Brookfield Avenue Parking Review, and before us, we have a recommendation that no parking exempt by permit prohibition be established on the east side of Brookfield Avenue between Leaming Street and Leaming Street, one point and the other 50 meters apart. Do we have any discussion on that? Okay, seeing none, look for a motion. Moved by Councilor Crater, seconded by Councilor Thompson. We'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved. Thank you. Unanimous. Charnwood, TS 2018-07, Intersection Control Review, recommendation that the existing yield sign intersection control be replaced with stop signs at the intersection along Charnwood as outlined in this report. Looking, moved by Councilor Peter Angelo, seconded by Councilor Strange. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved. Thank you. We've done the planning matter, communications, and comments of the city clerk. So we have a resolution from the region regarding the town of Pelham. It's just forwarded to us for information.
Received and filed.
Okay. Motion by Councilor Crater to receive and file, and seconded by Councilor Morocco. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved. Thank you. Mayor's Youth Advisory, there is a recommendation consideration of council that we do typically March break where they offer 50-cent bus rides.
Moved.
Moved by Councilor Morocco, seconded by Councilor Peter Angelo. Yes, Councilor Crater?
Just a short question was asked of me. The request for the 50 cents, the way I read this, it came from the students. They made the request?
Yes.
Okay.
And they do it every year?
Every year. Because what they'd asked me is, well, they were asking, why don't we just let them ride for free? That was the question. So I said I would pose the question and maybe we'd get an answer. So one would be because the students only wanted 50 cents, but is there a reason why we would just offer for free?
We could offer to pay them a little bit to get on the bus, too. I don't know how far you want to go with this.
That I would ask the question, so I'm doing that.
Matthew, who's filling in for Carl Dren today? Did you want to help us on that one?
There was no specific reason behind the cost. That's what they had requested, and on average is around 835 riders during that week that are students, so just to give you some context there.
So it'd be 400 bucks at 50 cents, and, well, it's up to council, the direction. Pardon me?
Doing math, I'm just...
It's pretty fast, right? Thank God it was simple numbers, otherwise I would have called Councilor Peter Angelo.
Sort of that way when you buy...
Pardon me?
417, 50.
So that's good. That's very good. We have a math teacher in the room, so luckily he can help me with my math. Yeah. So it's up to council. There's a request by the Mayor's Youth Advisory for 50-cent bus ride. It's up to this council how generous they want to be.
Your Worship, I think it's been in the current program for how many years?
Okay. So we've got a motion, we've got a motion by Councilor Morocco, seconded by Councilor Peter Angelo, that we support the recommend, or the request of the Mayor's Youth Advisory. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved. Thank you for that. The Niagara Falls Fire Department, their annual report is in here, and chief, is there anything specifically you wanted to say? We went through all the, it's got all the numbers, incidents, and whatnot. Anything specific you wanted to outline, or do you want us just to receive it and acknowledge it?
Your Worship, I think receiving for information for council.
Okay.
Your Worship, I would say...
Okay. Moved by Councilor Thompson, seconded by Councilor Peter Angelo. Yes, you want to speak to that, councilor?
Your Worship, I just wanted to give a comment. The other day when I had to represent you at the memorial for Trey, when I went there, I had spoken to the chief prior to it, and as you know, Trey had passed away from carbon monoxide inhalation, and so I had a conversation with the chief in regards to how many of these devices do we install in homes? Now, I understand that last year, the fire department ended up going out twice. We usually have an annual program where we go out in May, and the fire prevention office will send out a postcard to a specific area of the city, let them know that the firefighters are going to be in their area knocking on their door. And the firefighters go around and they knock on the doors and they check and see whether they have working smoke alarms and also CO monitors, and if not, then the fire department will install them. I asked the chief how many they installed last year, and it was about 100 CO monitors. And I wanted to at least announce something in memory of Trey when I went to represent you, so I talked to the chief about whether or not it would be possible to double that amount for this year. He thought that it would be achievable. I don't know whether or not it will be achievable inside the fire department's budget, but if not, I just wanted to let yourself and council know that if in the future the chief does come back and asks for some funds for CO monitors, that maybe it could be those that were utilized through an organization like Project Share, where you would contact people who might not have the ability to purchase these CO monitors, and then we could go out and install some just so that we can achieve our number this year. And again, Your Worship, I think it would be nice to do something in honor of Trey since he was in Niagara Falls.
Did you want to make a specific motion then, councilor, for a certain amount, and we can do it through Project Share?
Yeah, I just don't know what motion to make, Your Worship. I mean, if there's a motion you want, I would probably move that half of the monitors then be purchased and then, and then, I guess, installed through the use of organizations like Project Share or even the church. Share or even the church groups that would know of people who might be less fortunate and might not be able to afford CO monitors. And then Fire Prevention Office can contact those people and see whether or not they have CO monitors in their homes, and if not, then go put one in. The cost of them is not very much. I think it costs the fire department $20 each. So buying 100 of them is $2,000. And again, I think it's a nice gesture to Trey's family to do something on his behalf. So if you'd like a motion, I'd be happy to make that a motion, your worship.
So moved by Counsel Peter Angelo that we support the fire department by the purchase of 100 CO2 monitors. That'll be given out through community service groups like Project Share and some church groups that can identify some people that would need assistance with these. And...
And the goal would be to double the amount of our installation from last year.
With the goal of doubling the amount of CO2 installs this year in the honor of Trey. CO2 monitors?
CO.
CO? CO monitors. Carbon monoxide.
That's right.
Okay. Seconded by Counsel Strange. All right, do we have any other discussion to that? Okay, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Right, and that's approved.
Thanks, your worship.
Thank you. Oh, and we've got the report. Did you move the report, too, or?
I did.
Okay, so that was also, in addition, I was moving the report and the CO, the 100 CO monitors. 8.4, Niagara Falls Fire Department, Fire Kids Safe Report. And same thing, Chief?
So, Mr. Mayor, on this one, I'd like to just draw a couple of spots on it. So the Fire Prevention Division in 2017 came to us with regards to public education in the school program. As everybody knows, we're mandated to do public education through our government's legislation, and one of the school programs range anywhere from kindergarten to grade eight. So we were able to, we had a firefighter that came in off the floor, went into fire prevention because he's very passionate with regards to doing public education and dealing with schoolchildren. So he was able throughout the February to May, with some hiccups with regards to the one school board being on the work to rule and stuff, but he was actually able to do 148 presentations, hit 22 out of 29 schools, and we were able to teach over 3,200 students from grades K to three. It is our endeavor and our hope in the future that we can make this an annual event. We're not doing it this year to this magnitude, but then we're going to carry it on and then eventually expand it as we grow. But so I just wanted to draw attention that we're able to do around 3,200 students in 2017.
Fantastic. And that's the time to get to them when they're young, right? They're still paying attention, and they don't know it all yet, right? That's right, yes. Counselor Thompson?
Why are you not doing it, Ms. Sheriff?
Comes down to operating budget. Funding for our staff right now is, we're taxed for fire prevention, so we don't have a public educator position within our department, so we're trying to balance between the two.
Like, this isn't a new program. This has been going on since the 50s, hasn't it? In fact, I think I know the one who started this.
Correct. But then, when the budget, it got delayed when the government downloaded all of our information with regards to doing overoccupancies, restaurant inspections, all the other stuff that came through. This got, we lost this when Bob Wilson, Inspector Wilson, retired. This was then put to the side due to the other stuff.
Wow, that's sad. You know, it was a key element to influence the young people, and when I said that this has been going on since the 50s, I think it was introduced by my father when he was on the fire department, and he spent his whole life with demonstrations all over the province for fire prevention. So I would think it'd be worthwhile looking to see if we can institute that again, because it's a very important part of fire prevention. Absolutely. Anyway.
So did you want to receive, Counselor? Did you want to receive the report and then with a suggestion that we look at reinstituting it?
Well, absolutely. I think the chief would support that 100%.
I would, your worship.
Okay.
I'll second.
Well, Counsel Morocco, we seconded that, but you can vote for it. So we'll call the vote. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you for that. And then, in addition to council, 8.5, again from Fire, Request for Financial Assistance in Development of a Human Trafficking Program. Chief, did you want to maybe just give a quick overview? This comes from Fort Erie.
Correct. This is actually just a, it's a letter that was sent to the Clerk's Department from Fort Erie with regards to a resolution that was passed in a financial support to a program that's been going on since 2016 in the workings behind the scenes. So back in 2016, the YWCA received a grant for about $25,000 to try and deal with human trafficking in the Niagara region. I'm not sure if everybody's aware, but there's about 134 cases that we know of right now in the Niagara region. There's, the shocking news to myself today was that there's 15 individuals that are known to be in grade 10 within the region in both district school boards that are being affected by this. So the Niagara Falls Fire Department, in conjunction with all the other emergency services in the Niagara region, we've been working to try and get a coalition together to look at this and how can we better educate people. One of the things that we're moving forward with in Fire is we're dealing with it on an operational level where we have agreements with victim services and the public health, the police department, that if we identify or see somebody that is, we think is, one of those individuals, because we're there on a medical call, we're there for whatever the type of call, CO, maybe alarm, then we can deal with them, we can maybe help them, we can notify victim services that we've identified a person and they can follow up. So this that was done by Fort Erie is a little bit different than what we're doing in Fire, but they're talking about giving money to assist and going around and doing the different initiatives with regards to education for the public.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Morocco?
So, sorry, through you, your worship, to the chief. All right, so are you looking for this to be, to support this and also the $5,000 for education?
We're doing it operationally, because it's...
So I have no problem supporting that.
It's cost-effective for us, but...
Human trafficking is just bizarre.
I'm sure that the YWCA who's heading this up would be more than pleased if we could support the $5,000 and match Fort Erie.
Okay. And then also that it says, too, that there's a resolution that's being forward to Chairman Trudeau, Kathleen Nguyen, Rob Nicholson, I think, and Charles Sousa, so whoever's on there, is that you're also looking for the same thing?
That's correct.
I have no problem supporting that.
Just one last thing. There was 75% of human trafficking cases in Canada that come through the Golden Horseshoe.
Come from?
Through the Golden Horseshoe, through this region.
Counselor Peter Angelo?
Your worship, I would, I'd be happy to second the motion. I know oftentimes around council, we, you know, constantly say that we don't want to take on new services, especially ones that deal from a social aspect. Being a high school teacher, I know of some incidents only because as teachers, you end up being made aware of them. As a parent, my heart just bleeds when you hear these stories, so I fully support the motion, your worship.
So who made the motion? You did? Okay, Counsel Morocco? Okay, so there's a motion by Counsel Morocco, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo, that we support the recommendation, including the $5,000 that goes along with it to the YW. We'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's unanimous. Thank you for that. Mr. Clerk, are there any additional bylaws or amendments tonight? Counselor Peter Angelo?
Motion introduce the bylaw.
Motion by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Crater to give the bylaws an introduction. All those in favor? That's approved.
Moving second.
Bylaws 2018 through to 2000, or 21 through to 2018-27, read a first time.
Second and third, your worship.
Counselor Peter Angelo for a second and third reading, a seconded by Counselor Thompson. All those in favor?
Bylaws 2018-21 through 2018-27, read a second, third time and passed.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. New business. Counsel Morocco?
Thank you, your worship. I have three items I'd like to address here. I've had some calls from the residents in Chippewa on Rapids View and BeCater there, and it's been going on in quite some while that they've actually experienced some flooding that's actually never happened before in their basements. So we're looking into it, and there's a situation that we're trying to deal with in resolving this, and I'm afraid that if we don't look at it sooner, the fact is that if they've already had a few, and it's going to get worse as time goes on. And Counselor Thompson actually attended a couple of meetings with me as well as Mr. Holman to try and talk about addressing this issue. But what we need to do is to help resolve the flooding and stop it is really, we have to look at Tab 10. There's a column in there that says BeCater and Rapids View Drive Sewer Separation, and it's for an amount of $142,000 that's put in there, and I'd like to have that pulled and give staff the direction to start working on that, because I think that we're, you know, it's our due diligence to now try and take care of these people that are now having flooding that they didn't have before because of a sewer issue.
Okay, so that's, we got that motion, Mr. Clerk, and seconded by Counselor Thompson? Is that right?
Sure.
You're seconding? And you want to speak to it as well? Yep, by all means?
Yeah. I don't know how this ever happened, but we were out on site with Mr. Holman, and this whole section of new housing that went up years ago, but adjacent to the development, hotel development there. The sewer goes through the middle of the property. It's, the building has been destroyed because they haven't used it. People have been in there, they've smashed everything. It has to be demolished, for sure. But in the meantime, the sewer going through there is constantly plugged up and affecting all of the homes. So it's a pretty dire area for those people to be in. So the sooner we can do something, this is just for the engineering initially, and then to move on with it as quickly as possible. It's probably one of the most serious sewer areas that I've seen, so I'm happy to second the motion.
Okay. Any other discussion to the motion? Call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved. Thank you for that.
I'm sorry, and then just two more other items that I have here. I have a gentleman calling, actually, I had the lawyer's office contact me in regards to a four-way stop being installed at Rysdale and Hodgson and I think Green and Rysdale there. It just seems to be an ongoing problem, but anyway, the petition was like close to 100 people. There's not really even that many people, I don't think, that live, but everybody. Nobody didn't, not sign this petition to have a four-way stop there. I did have to say through you, too, that I've had a conversation with Matthew, and, you know, they would like to do a traffic study. But I think, you know, when we look at a traffic study, now it's going to be weeks before I put out, and basically, we're asking for stop signs to be put up to see if that would help slow down the speed of the people coming down those roads. And I don't think that that's really that big of a cost. I wouldn't like to put forward a motion, sorry, I'm congested as well, I'd like to put forward a motion that I have support of council to actually put up a four-way stop on Rysdale now to see if that's going to help, that we can look at doing something, and then look at doing a study later on to see if it's helped, and if not, then maybe there's speed bumps. But when I spoke to him today, he said they would be really happy just to look at having four-way stops put on that. So, and I don't know that that's a big cost. I think it's a lesser of a cost than the speed bumps and doing something that everybody's already signed a petition for.
And that's the corner of Rysdale and...
It's, and Matthew has exactly two. It's Rysdale, Hodgson, Green, and Green and Rysdale.
So I'm sorry, so which street is, what intersection are we at?
Yeah. If I can just provide some quick comments?
Yes, please.
It's long Rysdale Avenue. It's a short section road between Montrose Road and Beaver Dam's Road, and the requests for always stops were at Rysdale and Green and Rysdale and Hodgson. They're very closely spaced intersections. The residents had concerns with speeding.
People coming out the highway?
Residents coming off of, yeah, correct, the highway and Montrose Road and then traveling quickly down the road. Just a caution that we would not suggest always stops as a means for speed control. We find the most effective tool in that is speed humps. The resident was made aware of this, and he had requested us to study the implementation of speed humps when the weather was nicer, and we'll be fine to do that now, and again in the summer if that's a request. But if there's an immediate request for stop signs, we would entertain the will of council on that one as well.
Counselor, would the residents, would they be open to the idea of speed humps being put in there, or...
They would like, they would really be happy if something happened immediately, just because it is. And I've actually been down there myself, and I actually caught myself going a little bit fast at times, thinking, oh, my goodness, because here you are, all of a sudden, it's just like this short. And there's children in that area, like a lot of families, younger families in there, and I'm just thinking, like, if we could just put the stop signs just to address something right now and see if that helps, and then continue to do a study a little bit later on and see that if they don't like the stop and we look at the speed bumps, because I hear that the speed bumps is another slower, but he said that they weren't really big on this speed bumps, and that was my conversation with them today.
Okay.
So I would just like to know if we could have that support, council, to do that now.
Okay. So it looks like in the meantime, are you able to still do a traffic study if there's signs put up? Can you still do something further?
Likely, the always stops would influence the speed of traffic on the road, and at that point, always stops or speed humps may or may not be warranted. Just a caution, though, the installation of unwarranted stop signs, we tend to leads to noncompliance. So we may solve the speeding issue, but that would in turn lead to poor compliance at the stop signs, and we may have to deal with it at a later time.
Okay. Well, Counselor, it's up to you to make the motion.
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion to have the four-way stop, the always stop there on those streets.
Okay. So Counsel, you've heard, there's a motion by Counsel Morocco, seconded by Counsel Crater, that they put stops at the two spots along Rysdale Road that were just discussed. Okay, is there any other further discussion to that? Then we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved. Thank you.
Thank you. And then my last one is in regards to Beaverton Valley, Beaverton Boulevard. I know we're looking at doing a traffic study there as well, but it seems that there's a one-stop, it's just a three-way, like, but, so the people come through, and they come through like at a low speed. It's across the street from Marcel and Carol Dion's, and there's a park right there, and there is a stop sign, but trust me, they're not stopping. I've been there twice. They kind of just do a little bit of a stop, and then they kind of continue to go on, and then the other people are coming barreling through. So what they would like to see is an always stop there to hopefully stop these people and slow them down, and maybe give, put some signs up, too, that it is kids crossing the park. So I know you're looking at doing something there, and I'm sorry to kind of push this, but this is an ongoing over a year or so now that we've been back and forth.
Matthew, do you know the street that we're talking about?
Yes, I do.
He's been out there and met with us and done the study, and...
Yeah. So we've personally met Ms. Dion. There is poor compliance at the stop you're referring to, but there is very low use. So in the morning period, there's around 10 to 15 vehicles, similar in the evening. So if we're saying there's 50% compliance, it's truly only seven vehicles. We also did speed studies in front of the park, and we found that they're on 46 kilometers per hour, which is below the legal speed limit, would not qualify for traffic calming at this point. We did propose improvements to the stop sign on Beaverton and White Dove, and there will be additional pavement markings across walk and a stop bar applied there in the spring when the pavement marking crews are able to go to that location. So that was being, that's what's being done to improve the stop sign compliance there.
So there's a motion, you're making a motion?
Motion to do always stop.
So that would be adding in one more spot? Because I'm sorry, I just can't map visually.
Yeah, currently, vehicles on Beaverton can go through the intersection without stopping. The request from Counsel Morocco was to put an always stop there.
Okay, are the residents, have we got to buy in on that?
Oh, yes.
Okay. All right, so you've heard the motion, folks, moved again by Counsel Morocco, seconded by Counsel Crater?
Yes, Mr. Mattson?
Could we just get clarity, is, I'm hearing Beaverton Boulevard, is there an actual intersection, another cross street?[1772.12]
Uh, the cross, the cross street is White Dove.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. So we'll call that vote. All those in favor? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, that's all. Thank you very much.
Counselor Thompson, then Counselor Crater? And Counselor Strange?
I was giving a copy of, uh, a letter that was sent to the mayor and a member of council on, dated July 17th, 2017, uh, requesting, uh, investigation into, uh, a traffic area and Portage Road between, uh, Russell and Church's Lane. Um, the speeding there, that the, uh, Stephen McGannity, uh, signed a letter along with the Mr. John Ferguson, 3227 Portage Road North and 3420 Portage Road. We had a huge debate here, uh, a few years ago, and we took out a speed pump there because one of the houses had a white front, and, uh, uh, we finally, uh, made the decision to, uh, remove it. Anyway, they sent the letter in and asked to, uh, have this area looked at again. At the time, we were, we looked at, uh, stop signs, uh, to try to slow the traffic down, but apparently it has increased substantially. So, um, could somebody please, I have a copy on my phone, but I'm sure somebody knows, and I thought if it was the mayor and a member of council, we'd go on the council agenda. And, yep, they've never had a response, they've never had anybody call them, talk to them, and, uh, that's, uh, unacceptable. So I would move that, uh, be in touch with, uh, Mr. McGannity and Mr. Ferguson on the Portage North, uh, and, uh, see if we can institute, uh, some kind of traffic control to satisfy their response, uh, from, uh, July 17th.
So we'll get that information to Matthew, and we can follow up with, uh, Mr. McGannity?
Yeah.
Yeah. And I don't know what... Okay, that's moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. We'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, and that's approved. Uh, Counselor Crater?
Uh, thank you, worship. I made reference a couple of times earlier in the council meeting about the petition from the residents and the school, Princess Margaret on Colp Street. So, um, the petition is, is signed by all, majority of the residents there, uh, with their names and their addresses, and it's simply asking that we, the undersigned, are requesting that the council include in the 2018 capital budget, full funding of the $1.7 million to complete Colp Street infrastructure project. This was a priority one, and then just got bumped out. And so they're asking for some action to be taken that they know it's not just, it's bumped and it's just, now it sits in limbo. They want something to even possibly start this year. Maybe it can't get all done, but restart so they know it's going to move forward. So I'm going to introduce it, I'll ask it to the clerk. He could stamp it and then give me back a copy, because I want to take it out to the residents to show, although they're probably watching TV, but it's been submitted. And then I, we'll bring it forward on the 27th, maybe it's May, maybe it's the May meeting, we're going to have that conversation.
Yep. The O.G. funds will be the...
And that's fine, I'll do it at that time. All right?
Okay.
Thanks. So I'm submitting this. I don't think I need a motion to do that, I'm just submitting it.
Okay. So we've got that, Mr. Clerk? Uh, Counselor Strange? Oh, your worship, I just want to, uh, wish my better half, Susie, she's turning...
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Susie. She's 35 years old today. Wow. So...
Can't reach.
So I understand, no, I didn't, I understand, 35, you can start playing old timers hockey, so I didn't know if the city had an old timers hockey team. Those are romantic words, I got to tell you. Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Crater. All those in favor? Thank you. Thank you.